Recording in progress.
The hour of 5:30 having arrived, the clerk will call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. We have Planning Commissioner Dan, Gordon.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
McKelvey.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Vice Chair Paul Hamas is absent tonight, and Chair Conway is absent. Councilmember Newsom.
Present.
Brown.
Here.
Leitken.
Here.
Brunner.
Present.
Calentari Johnson.
Present.
Vice Mayor Golda.
Here.
Mayor Keeley.
Here. A quorum having been established, we will begin our joint meeting of the Santa Cruz City Council and the Santa Cruz City Planning Commission. If I could make some brief opening remarks, and then we will get to the staff presentation and council and commissioner comments on the plan, and invite the public also to participate in this study session. I think it's fair to say that we welcome our planning commissioners, our friends, our colleagues who do an awful lot of work for our city in a very rapid-changing environment with the state laws changing so rapidly, requirements changing rapidly. And you folks are doing very good work, and we appreciate it because what you work your way through and then send forth to us through your advice role is enormously valuable to us. Having you look at these items, whether they are policy or individual development proposals, with a keen eye and high level of ethics that you apply to these matters, we on the City Council very much appreciate that, and we're so happy that you are here this evening and that we will jointly examine the downtown expansion plan. So thank you all, first of all, very, very much. Our planning staff, who Lee Butler and his team, Sarah and all of Bill, who is here, all of the folks who, and Matt, all of the folks who participate in this exercise through our planning department, through our economic development department, the city attorney's office and others, we are enormously grateful to all of you as well. This is very, very good work served up, and we appreciate it. I would like to begin by saying a couple of other things. One is what this is and what this is not. This is an attempt to take the policy of the city and try to operationalize that through a downtown expansion plan. In early 2023, this city council by unanimous vote established what we are managing towards downtown. That is not an issue here or at any other meeting we're going to have. We already know what we're doing. What we're doing is we are trying to operationalize a plan which says no building will be tolerated in 12 stories, will have 1,600 units downtown, and 20% of all of those units will be affordable in the various affordability categories as defined by the state and federal governments. That's our plan. What we're now thinking about is how do we operationalize that? How do we do that parcel by parcel, area by area? How do we make that really happen through a series of complementary public policies? That, I think, is what our discussion's about. We will receive information on that tonight, and that's what we are seeking from you, planning commissioners, as well as city council members. We are seeking your advice and counsel on how we will make that happen, not whether we should make that happen, or it should be some other number of stories or some other number of years. We're a year and a half past that point of discussion and conversation. So tonight will be a study session on a couple of things. One is the planning department's very good work on this, and they will go through it in some detail. And then we are seeking your advice and counsel, everyone who's in this meeting, including the public. But being very clear that what we're seeking your input on is how to operationalize and bring about what I call the 12-16-20 Plan. 12 stories, 1,600 units, 20% affordable. So again, thank you all for being here. Thank the planning department. Thank you, good folks, for being part of this. And I am now going to ask the planning department to begin your presentations. And Mr. Butler, thank you so much for your good work.
Thank you, Mayor Keeley, and good afternoon, council members and planning commissioners. I'm Lee Butler, Director of Planning and Community Development for the city. And as the mayor mentioned, we have been working on how we will implement the direction that we have from the city council from January of 2023. So it's been about 15 months or so since we've been in front of you, and we're happy to bring a draft plan before you today. Matt Vannois, our principal planner in advanced planning, and Sarah Noisy have been working diligently with our consultant, Bill Wiseman, on putting together that draft plan. And we're going to present the overview of that to you this evening so that we can get that feedback, and they can talk to you about the contents of the plan. Just some logistics, they're going to go through some of the certain, they're going to go through parts of the plan and then open it up for questions from the commissioners and from the council members, and then continue on to the next part. And if it pleases the mayor, then we will have public comment following all of those questions, and then open it up to the planning commissioner and then council member comments and feedback on the plan. So that's the approach that we discussed. And Mayor, if you'd like to handle it any other way, that's your prerogative. I will go ahead and share my screen here now and turn it over to Matt Vannois.
Mr. Vannois, good evening, welcome.
Hey, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Chair, Planning Commission. Thank you very much, Matt Vannois, Principal Planner for Advanced Planning. I am stepping in for Sarah Noisy today. She couldn't be with us, but she is online in case we need to speak with her. So I'll begin. So I'm here with Bill Wiseman as well, who is with Kim Lee Horn, our consultant on the project. So our agenda for tonight, Lee had mentioned a little bit. We have some downtown plan background and then a review of the draft downtown plan, which includes these three sections, community spaces, streetscapes and circulation, and proposed floor area ratios, and the increased affordable housing overlay. And those are the three sections where we'll stop for clarifying questions, comments, and then following that discussion. So as you know, background, the downtown specific plan came about in 1991 following the recovery of the earthquake and has been updated several times since, most recently in the late 2010s where we increased height for residential uses in the core of the downtown. And, you know, we really see the effects of that today. Those small height changes did spur new development in the area, which really significantly helped increase our housing in the city. And this project to expand the downtown, expand upon those successes of the recent work on the plan, was partially funded by state grant funding with the goals to increase housing capacity and support further economic opportunity in the area. And so project context, you'll see in the blue is our current downtown plan, and the green is our beach and south of Laurel plan, and the red is our project area, where it's taking a small portion of that beach and south of Laurel area directly south of our existing downtown. And so this south of Laurel area district, it's about 29 acres. You can see it just in a little more detail here. And here's a photo, for instance, too, with the Casa Permanente Arena and several of the other blocks captured there. We're looking west from Laurel Bridge there. And so we've been to council and planning commission several times for feedback throughout the two and a half, three years we've been working on this now. One key meeting in particular I just wanted to highlight was a meeting in January 2023 where we received further council direction on this 12-16-20 plan. As the mayor mentioned, doing what we can to keep the area to 12 stories, to 1,600 units, while we are studying 1,800 units in the EIR to give us some leeway, just in case. That's the environmental impact report for SEQA. And 20% affordable inclusive of density bonus. So we've also done a lot of community outreach throughout this process. It started in November 2021 with a workshop, followed by a survey, and then we had a large open house in April 2022. And then in the fall of 2023, we had a second community survey that had about 1,100 responses, which was really significant and gave us a lot of great, a lot of great feedback. And following that, we did some really specific focus group work as well to get some, to further dial in some of the responses that we heard from that survey. And just to give you a brief flavor of that survey, we asked certain things about like ground floor uses. How supportive or not supportive are you? The general, and we talked about ground floor, we talked about pedestrian and bicycle circulation, traffic, design, ground floors, any number of things. And what we found was generally there's a lot of support for many of the things that are in the plan currently. And you can go into a lot more detail on this on our website. We have a significant summary of this survey report, as well as we also, at the end of this survey, we allowed people to provide, you know, general comments on the plan as well. And those general comments also, we actually used like AI program to sift through them and figure out what was, you know, supportive and not supportive, for instance, of the plan in general. And there's a majority support, most certainly. So that was exciting to see through that survey and the 1,100 responses. So here's just a few other examples, and you can go and you can see there's about 16, 17 questions that go into a lot of quantitative detail online. And so throughout this plan, too, since 2021, we've been working with project objectives, and those were adding capacity for multifamily housing, creating opportunities for public amenities and infrastructure, better connecting the downtown with the river and beach, creating new economic opportunities, generating new tax revenue to support city services, improving the pedestrian and bicycle experience, and incorporating a permanent Warriors arena into the plan. And just for instance, one of our survey questions that I just had mentioned asked people to rank these. And the number one was creating opportunities for public amenities and infrastructure, and number two was adding capacity for multifamily housing. And so throughout this whole process, since we've gathered, you know, a lot of feedback from council and planning commission and this various community outreach work, we are now at the place where there's a draft downtown plan incorporating all this feedback. And just to explain that further, there's kind of two parts to how we had to do this draft plan. We have the, an appendix to our existing plan, Appendix 8, which is what it's called. And that focuses on the public improvements, parks, streets, circulation, things like that, that are more in the public realm. And then we also have amendments to our existing downtown plan, which really build on the existing design standards, building standards, things like that, that are more specific to development projects. So we have those two pieces of the plan, and I'll have Bill come up here and walk you through the public space aspect of that, public space and streets. And then I'll follow up the conversation, again, going back to standards, heights, things like that. Take it away, Bill. Thank you.
Mr. Wiseman, good afternoon, good evening, rather. Welcome.
I just want to note that at the end of last year, I retired. I want to say that there's a few projects that I'm consulting back on, and this is the number one project. The ability to work in my community on a project of this magnitude, they take time, as many big projects I've worked on, it's to be expected. But it's a real pleasure for me and professionally rewarding to be able to work on a project that's significant. When I was 18, I went walking down the mall, fresh from Virginia, out here to California, and I was like, I'm at home. It was a memory. So anyhow, to be able to work on downtown here is a real pleasure.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate being here. Okay, so I'm going to focus on the components of really the community spaces. So the real essence of this project is to be able to create a community space and gathering space and a social interaction. It's using that public realm to be able to create some excitement. And I kind of think of it as an entertainment district in the context of you have the Warriors and you have an arena which acts as an anchor. And so the whole goal that we've been working with, with the city and architects and the Warriors, et cetera, is to think about how the public realm, the community spaces works, and what we can do to enhance that and really make a draw, and extend that downtown down into this area and make the whole downtown a vibrant area. And then ultimately also connecting that with the beach area. So what I'm going to do is go through, and this first slide just shows you conceptually what the plan is about. I'm going to give a couple of context issues about what you're seeing in blue and what some of the graphics are. And then I'm going to go into seven different community space areas and talk a little bit about what the design is and the intent, and then just summarize a few of the policies. So largely, this is a policy document in the context, it sets the framework because there's not a specific design itself, but there's a framework by which it could be used in the future so that as development comes online, there's a reference for city staff and the public, et cetera, and going through design process that says, okay, this is the vision that we're looking to go forward with. So those areas in blue translate to what we call the redevelopment block. So these letters will get used in the future. So it's important to just have a context of what we envisioned right for redevelopment. Those areas that are gray, but still within the south of Laurel area, are areas, for example, triple five Pacific. It's a new building, it's not going to get developed over the next 20 or 30 years. And other parcels are not included, be them their size or age or other factors. So, and A, B, C, and D are really the core. So it's important to kind of get a memory or visual on those four because that really is the heart and soul of this project area. The other thing to set the context that then defines the framework for the project is the existing and proposed circulation. And there's three major components that are the deltas, if you will, between the existing, which you're seeing in the lower right, and then the larger image of what's being proposed. The first is Spruce Street, which is our east-west, which connects from Pacific out to the Santa Cruz, excuse me, Santa Cruz Riverwalk and the San Lorenzo River. You'll see what's being proposed there is to basically close the entire street. There's a dotted line between Pacific and Front, so it's sort of some little flexibility. But ultimately, the idea is to create a connection between Pacific Avenue and the river. The other part is to really open up the river and create much better access to it. So there, at present, Laurel Street Extension extends from Spruce Street South and goes basically down river, and that's prime real estate. So why not think about how we could open that up and utilize that interface of the buildings and whatnot and not have a roadway that's bisecting it? So the plan is what's called the Laurel Street Extension, which is the dark line that you see at the bottom there. Basically, a narrow roadway, still providing the same access, but tucked along Beach Hill so that cars can circulate in there. And then that opens up the whole, basically blocks, the, I'm going to mix things up, easterly side of blocks B and D with a river interface. And then the last component of this to focus in on is a roundabout at the intersection of Front Street and Pacific. So that's, we already have the Depot Roundabout. The idea is to create another roundabout up there in an area where there's a lot of conflict. It's a tough area, it's a little bit unsafe. And the idea is to create a roundabout there and also have that serve as a gateway, basically an entrance that says, ah, you've arrived. So something substantial that visually reinforces the southern entrance. So the seven community spaces that we're going to kind of drill in on are listed here, 1 through 7, and I'm going to go through each of these and talk a little bit about each one. So the first is Spruce Street Plaza. So that's what connects from Pacific Avenue across to the Santa Cruz River. The idea here is to, one, to actually widen the built forms so that you have a bigger space, so some building setbacks, and then to create this plaza that's really vibrant and really the heart and soul of the entire Sola area, Sola district. This can be a place that's basically creating a community plaza for community events. It's an outflow, pre and post arena events. It can be for other types of events such as food truck, trying to get my notes here, food truck gathering, outdoor markets, et cetera. So really, this becomes holiday events. This becomes the core by which people can gather. And by widening that space out, you can get up to about 4,000 people that could fit into this space. So it could become, you know, really a symbolic center for not just the city, but really for the region. Some of the policies relating to this are basically to close it to traffic, to utilize high-quality materials, provide extensive seating and special lighting and interactive features and art, so creating that vibrant space. And this is just another image of, for context of what you're trying to create there. And I think what's important to think about is, you know, I've gone down to this arena many times, and it largely, you know, there's not a lot of activity that goes on there, particularly during the day. And so thinking about that plaza and creating it so it has a much more vibrant and much more, I won't say 24/7, but certainly 12/7 or whatever the right number is, you know, that it has activity far beyond just when there's an arena event. I think it would be really critical. Okay, next community space is the Santa Cruz Riverwalk. There's a cross-section here, so this is what we talked about with moving the Laurel Street Extension so that basically creating a space. And the important thing here is the interface between blocks B and D, how those buildings function, how they relate to the levee, and then how the circulation occurs on the levee itself. So looking at the cross-section there or the plan view, you see enhanced paving. And so that is an area where you've got some sort of interface with the buildings and maybe there are cafes or restaurants or whatever. In other words, there's an interface with the buildings. There's a separated pathway for bikes, so there's, it's serving as a throughput. And then you have pedestrian pathway and levees, excuse me, next to the levee. Some of the policies in addition that I want to note are maintaining solar access to the greatest extent possible because you're right next to the river. And the other thing is to consider creating design solutions to better utilize the land associated with the storm pumps that are on the north side of block B. So right now, there's a very important piece of infrastructure there, but it's fenced in barbed wire and, you know, there's maybe some opportunities to use the airspace or something creative to basically open up that very, very valuable land. It's also right where, as you're coming across, and Matt showed that photo, coming across Laurel Street Bridge, when you take that turn and you're coming down Laurel Street Bridge, that's what you're going to see right there. So it's an important opportunity there that if we can do something with that, I think it'll be really, really a great success. Pacific Avenue, essentially, the idea is really make this an extension of what's already there north of Pacific Avenue. So that character of a wide sidewalks, well landscaped, lots of amenities. There's policies related to encouraging restaurant and outdoor use. Also being able to close on some occasions, on a temporary basis, to be able to close the road off, so maybe a series of bollards or something like that, so that it can serve as really an extension of the Spruce Street Plaza for certain events. You've got that access as well, so you can really open up and create a lot, even more space for that. Next is Front Street. So Front Street still is going to need to function in the context of its volumes for traffic because it is the main connector between the downtown and the beach area. So recognizing that it's still going to have, you know, just needs to accommodate transit and truck traffic, et cetera, but still keeping at least a wider sidewalk notion there, minimizing the number of driveways so that there isn't a lot of conflict, encouraging drop-off zones, so depending on where the arena goes, and I'll get to that a little bit later, the place to pick up and drop off for vehicles is part of the context here. Mainly focused then on design and streetscape changes, but not functional changes is kind of the theme there. Laurel Street Extension, I kind of envision Laurel Street Extension in the future as this little shady hideaway, if you will. It's going to have a one-lane road, great spot for a bookshop and an overflow cafe or something with nice foliage. You've got the Beach Hill Cliff on one side and buildings on the other. I think it could be quite a memorable space if it's designed well. So that's kind of the idea here with what can happen within this sort of an intimate part of, quiet part of downtown, a place to meet up and say, hey, I'll meet you over at the extension and we can have a conversation. One of the keys here is on relocation because here, as well as other residential areas within the plan, there is a policy that says the realignment shall only occur after the relocation of the residents and closure of the Front Street Residential Care Facility. And this has to be consistent, as it's written, with city and state regulations. So there's regulations in place, and the city is actually, I understand from talking with Lee earlier today, to actually expand on those regulations. But I think it's important to note that anywhere within the planning area, there are regulations that will protect for relocation requirements. So there's a rigid process for that. And this one is particularly important given the residents that are there. Pacific Avenue and Front Street, the roundabout that I talked about, there's policies in there, first off, to provide separated bike and pedestrian, so one way, so really making sure that it functions well for bikes and pedestrians. The idea of creating some sort of significant feature within the center, be it landscaping or art or combination, et cetera, with some landscaping enhancements, really being able to sort of slow the circulation down so it's safe, and also the idea of a memorable gateway entrance. The last is on the arena. So just for context, right now, the arena seats about 2,500 permanent and about 3,100 permanent and temporary. And it would increase by about 25 to 30%, so it'd be 3,200 fixed seat and 4,000 fixed and temporary. So that's the framework by which we're working with and talking with the Warriors. So replacement of that building, also, it would have some ancillary uses. They want to have a second practice court, there'd be locker rooms, a gym, administrative, et cetera. So really trying to create a state-of-the-art arena for, yeah, arena for the Warriors, but also designing it so that it can be multi-use for lots of other different venues. At present, the document identifies, because it's not known yet, the arena could be on either block C or block D. Block D is where the temporary arena is at the moment. So there's some design considerations that go on for how that's going to work. As far as policy standpoints, some keys are for either block is to really make sure that it's user-friendly and facing out in a positive way onto the Spruce Street Plaza. That interface is going to be really critical, so the design of that's going to be important. And additionally, if it is on block D, there's that interface with the Riverwalk itself and how those interfaces, or excuse me, how that, how that interaction occurs. The only other thing, no, that's all I want to say on that. Okay, so with that, this is the first of three pause points, if you will. And the idea is if any, there's clarifying questions because there's a lot of content, you know, we don't want people to forget, so we'll pause and we'll get back to the mayor, and we'll go from there for the questions, and I'll come back.
Thank you. I think what I'll do, if it works for both bodies here, is I'll start here with Ms. Gordon, work my way all the way around. Next time, we're going to start in the other direction, move our way around. Everybody okay with that? We're good? Ms. Gordon, good evening, thank you for your service.
So I'm actually a little distracted by this. The person that's up here on the screen, I don't know, there's, oh, yeah, okay. Sorry, I was a little caught off guard by.
You're doing fine. You're doing fine.
So, I think, well, I don't, I think my questions are probably gonna come up in a little bit more depth, so I think I might, I might pass.
Good.
Yeah.
Councilmember Brunner, good evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill Wiseman, for presenting those community spaces thus far, and thank you to everyone who has submitted input thus far. We've received emails and input as well. So, putting it all together, my clarifying questions relate to this, I'll go in my order here. The Spruce Street Plaza and how, between Front Street and Pacific Avenue, there is a residential driveway there, how, how would that, how would that work?
So, I think the way I would answer that is that when redevelopment occurs, the phases will be a little bit challenging, that's why these things take so long, but it probably, I would envision that you basically have a clean slate. And so, that, to redesign that street would take a complete redoing. It's not something that's incremental. So, where you see a driveway now, it may not exist or most likely wouldn't exist in the context of a master planning redevelopment effort.
I'll just add as well, just to clarify that residential driveway you mentioned, that, that was between Front and Pacific, right? Okay. As we, as we, our current proposal, we're, we're assuming that the arena's most likely gonna go on Block D adjacent to the river, and in that scenario, we're currently proposing just the portion of spruce between Front and the river be pedestrianized.
I see.
So, it'd only change if, at this point, right now, our current draft plan shows only that portion pedestrianized, but if the, if the arena were to go on that Block C between Pacific and Front, then, then we would want to consider pedestrianizing that portion of spruce as well, just given arena spill-out events, community events, things like that.
So, for everyone to keep in mind that these are conceptual ideas based on input from the surveys and other meetings, and what's existing there may or may not be part of the plan. This isn't a workaround with some of the existing infrastructure necessarily, is that...
Yeah, correct. Some, some portions of this will certainly be phased in over a longer time than others and be based on development or, or our, you know, capital, capital funding, things like that.
Okay, and, so, my, thank you, that, that's helpful. My second question was around metro, transit, and shuttle stops, and how that, that is incorporated into the conceptual plan with the community spaces, and I see Claire Galaglie coming forward with that.
Hi, I'm Claire, Transportation Planner in Public Works. We are closely coordinating with Metro on all things as we move forward, and this is another case where, as this development were to occur, we would look at where the existing transit stops are and if there's an opportunity to move them to better serve the development that we were seeing. In the near term, there's no plans to change transit service. I could see if the arena was on a different parcel than it is now, maybe wanting to orient an improved transit stop at that location to facilitate people getting to and from games and other housing opportunities.
Great. And I noticed you used the term entertainment district, and in some of the agenda documents, there was reference to arts district, and I just wonder at what point in the process those terms, I guess, become more determined, and how that gets determined? I know, for example, the Tannery Arts Center is working on becoming an arts district, and so I just, in, in looking at the whole picture of the city and context of everything around, thinking about how this, the relationship of this new updated neighborhood relates with its neighboring neighborhoods, and, so, I don't, I don't know if that's a clarifying question that can be answered, but maybe at what point in the process, I know that that question has come up, when that gets to that point.
Yeah, thank you for that. We have started to engage with the arts community as well as our Economic Development Department as well on, on thinking about the, the future of this area. There's certainly a lot more work to do in that regard. I, I see it more as like a Phase Two, because we do need to do a lot further outreach to that community and, and to the community at large when we're thinking about what kind of art spaces and public spaces can, can be like in this area. So, we don't, we don't have those specifics yet in what, what public art might go into the plan or how it can become an arts district in the future, if, if that's what the community decides. But given, given the, you know, the potential for a new arena and, you know, concerts and other kind of community events that can happen in that area, there's certainly a synergy to build on. So, I could see in the future, as, as this plan comes to fruition, there, I think there's gonna be more and more momentum to create some kind of district like that in the future.
I think that's helpful, and I think for everyone who's also asking those questions, this is still at, at a more high-level conceptual, community spaces could work in this way on these parcels, and all those logistics are still in the process, and...
Correct.
This is an ongoing process, so that's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Colin Terry Johnson is recognized.
Thank you. I have no clarifying questions at this point.
Vice Mayor is recognized.
Thank you. I just have two quick ones. When you're looking at Front Street, you said it was gonna still be two ways after the roundabout when it goes towards Pacific, is that still two ways or is that one way? I couldn't tell from the...
Two ways, and I think the next section gets into more detailed circulation also.
Okay, thank you. And then my other follow-up question, and I know that you've been in talks with the county, I think they run that residential facility, but has there been any talk, and I don't know how many years out all of these plans are, but as new permanent supportive housing comes online at Coral Street, is there talk about help collaborating with Housing Matters and helping relocate residents there at this point, or is that too soon?
Thanks for that question, Vice Mayor Goldar. So, that is a specialized population at that location, and the county has, and the conversations that we've had have been looking at providing a new facility that would accommodate that. There has been some thought about Coral Street accepting that, but that hasn't, that hasn't risen as, you know, the preferred alternative at this point. So, the development team and the county and the city have had a number of conversations because we recognize that that is a key component of being able to relocate that roadway network.
Thank you.
Councilmember Watkins is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation and overview. I had one just question I wanted to know, because I didn't really see it explicitly stated in the agenda report or the appendix, in that, how is parking contemplated, given state laws really undermining the ability for us to require parking, yet we're having a draw location specifically with the Warriors, so...
Hi, I'll also ping that Gavin's online, our Parking Programs Manager, so if you have further questions, let me know. Currently, this area is outside of our downtown parking district, and so any benefits that you see currently in the district with a shared parking model and our structures and the ability for permits don't carry forward to this zone at this time. The thinking that we have is that state law gives developers the opportunity to develop a higher number of units in these transit supportive zones and with these affordability guidelines, and one of the benefits of doing that is not having to provide parking on-site. What goes hand-in-hand with that is the assumption that on the private side, developers will provide as much parking as they think is needed. One of the questions that we have had internally is what's the city's role in providing parking in this area and subsidizing vehicular travel rather than thinking about street scape design? At this time, we do not own parcels for parking in this area, and so it's an area I'd love to hear some feedback on from you.
Okay. Well, I think we need parking down there. There's a little bit of feedback. If you talk to anybody who goes to the Warriors, they really struggle to get parking. So, if we're designing this for our entire county and region to be an attraction, my parents come from Aptos, right, like, they're gonna need to find somewhere to park. So, however, we're contemplating that moving forward, I would just share that as an important criteria. The other thing I, and I don't know if Tiffany's here, is just there was sort of reference of environmental review, and I'm wondering what sort of has been put into thought around that, given the, kind of the flood hazard and risk area for, you know, climate change, and I know it's sort of referenced in kind of the other plan components, but what's the next steps, I guess, with some of the environmental considerations is the question?
Yeah, thank you for that. We, we do have a next step slide that goes into detail on that at the end, but I'll just give you briefly the, the next steps. Once we've heard feedback from Council and Planning Commission and community members into July here, we're gonna take that feedback, refine the plan further, and once that plan's refined, we're gonna have a really good idea of what to start our environmental SEQA process around. And so, this summer, we're going to be undertaking that Environmental Impact Report process. We've already started that, we've been working on, you know, traffic simulations and things like that already, given where we're at, but we're gonna be finishing the EIR this, this summer into fall, and then there'll be another public review process through, through that EIR process where people can, can review that document, make further comments, and then we respond to those into the, into the winter of this year. And so, so the things that you mentioned, you know, flood zone, other environmental impacts, those will, those will not only be taken into account in this document, but also there will still be SEQA done on a project-to-project basis as projects come in. So, there will be, you know, a further, a further refinement of looking in those specific project impacts as projects come in.
Great, thanks. I guess as it relates to community spaces, maybe we can think about it also with that consideration in terms of shading and, you know, pleasant experiences for people with all different weather conditions, I guess. And then the other thing is there was a picture of, like, you know, in the Spruce Street area for families, and I just want to encourage that as something that remains in the plan. I don't think there's a lot of spaces downtown where you can kind of feel comfortable letting your kids just run around, and, I don't know if you've been to Los Gatos, like, there's a little spot where you can kind of like close the fence, and they're good, and you're out, kind of able to enjoy outside eating and still observe, and however, we can think about that as we're thinking about community spaces. I, I really think that's important. So, anyways, I'll leave my questions.
Thank you. That, that's a great point. I just want to mention, we've also been working, coordinating quite closely with our Parks Department through this as well, and, and they agree. I think, I think we're all hoping to have, I don't know if you've been to Boulder, Colorado, like Pearl Street, where they have like really built-in things into the street that are, that are interactive and, and fun for a lot of ages, you know, thinking more about that stuff, how that can come into the plan. We'll see what comes of that. Parks and public spaces will certainly be a future component of this and thinking about those exact details, but it is something we're thinking about.
Great. And I think to Councilmember Brunner's point around consulting the art community and consulting, you know, youth and families and teens and all people, people of all ages would be great information to inform how to move forward. So, anyways, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. Your enthusiasm is evident and contagious. I'm excited about the possibilities here. I, I'm gonna ask a question that is not necessarily, well, it will help clarify for me, it's, I don't know that it's a clarifying question, and I recognize that we are in conceptual phase. I recognize that the plan, at least as I've read it, includes a recognition that an impact fee will be required and that new revenues are expected to help cover the costs for the additional services that are gonna be needed and, and infrastructure. But what I see is really significant infrastructure costs, and so I'm just wondering conceptually, at least, how you are thinking about the kind, how we're gonna raise the capital needed to make these kinds of major changes.
Ms. Lipscomb, good evening, welcome to the council meeting.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, commissioners. So, we have been looking at the infrastructure costs and recognize that those costs are great for the district. We've been, we've contracted with Cosmont, and we're looking at a variety of financing strategies. The main one we're focusing on initially is an Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District, which is sort of like a redevelopment 2.0, and that is voluntary by the city and potentially voluntary by the county if they would like to participate, and it's at varying levels of participation. So, you can dedicate, you know, 25%, 50%, 75% of future growth, so it sets the base year that all continues to the general fund, and then a percentage of that over the base year that's based on the projected development in there is dedicated to the district, and so off that, we could bond or potentially finance. We could also layer a community facilities district with that, tax-sharing agreements, there's a variety of different funding mechanisms that we're looking at to contemplate the, the heavy load of public infrastructure and some of the amenities that we would like to see in the area.
That's all I've got for now. Thank you.
Councilmember Newsom is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no questions at the moment.
Commissioner Thompson, good evening.
Good evening. I focused my attention reviewing the draft on the dimensions, the size of things, how wider sidewalks and, and like that, and, and I like the plan. I think it's got the dimensions right. The one place that I think can use some elaboration is where the sidewalk meets the building, because right now, it's just drawn as if the sidewalk comes up and meets the building, but in fact, we like to have some planting often between our buildings and the sidewalk, and I'm not comfortable with the notion that the planting then subtracts from the sidewalk width. So, we might provide more direction for how we can get landscaping at the building without sacrificing the sidewalk width.
Thank you, sir. Further? Commissioner McKelvey, good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for the presentation and all the work over several years now. This is a marathon, not a sprint, but I've got a few things. There was a statement made early on in the presentation about the necessity for keeping Front as a major thoroughfare, and I'm wondering if that's based on metrics that have been calculated or whether it is a goal that...
Hi. Yeah, no, thank you for that question. What we think of is a transportation network, and so we look in this area, and there are some areas that we need to have be flow streets and some areas that we want to be slow streets, more people-centered. Front Street is one of the, and really our choices between getting from downtown north-south are really Front and Pacific there. The choice we made here was, as you'll see, I think in the next section when we get through some cross-sections, and we'll get into that in a little more detail, so I'll give the high level, and then if you have further questions, we can get more into it then. But really looking at where do we want vehicles and transit to be, and where do we want to orient more towards people spaces? And in that choice, Front had the higher transit utilization, has more truck volumes and has more vehicular needs on it, so in making those choices in our hierarchy of where people go, that was the direction that we were going.
What I, what I see in the plan is that it's kind of an attempt to slow it down in Front, in, on Front Street, and it kind of works against that goal a little bit, and I see that that cruciform shape of the streets there, I love the connection... And I see that that cruciform shape of the streets there, I love the connection to Spruce, I love the continuation, the connection to the water, but it's, it really kind of balkanizes the space that's available for development and creates, it could be a great connection, but it also is, it kind of hamstrings what the options are, and particularly as regards the connection to the river and kind of making that a linear piece that may need a little more room. That's kind of where that's coming from. So I'd love to hear more about...
Okay, I would say hold it when we get to cross-sections, and then we'll get in some detail of it.
Right. Let's skip over those. One thing that we haven't really talked about, and I think is just one of my favorite parts of this plan, is the connection of kind of the terminus of the Riverwalk at Cliff Street and then the connection down to the waterfront. Because I walk that area quite a bit. It's, it could be, I think, a really beautiful part of this plan. And I think also that in terms of the goal of connecting the downtown to the beach, and we want to pedestrianize, I just think every opportunity we can take to make that connection from this area down to the waterfront is really important to pay attention to. And then I've just gotta say that I think some parking underground would be terrific. I don't, for an event-based, you know, I see festivals, you know, out on the riverfront there, and I would love to see, you know, people could be from out of the area, might not just be community members. I'd like to see that kind of draw and being able to accommodate them, so.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Kennedy, good evening.
I remember being so thrilled by the kind of section at the big study session down at the current Warriors Stadium. And so I wondered if you could just go back and give me an update on how that's evolved? The thing I saw then was how the streets kind of rose up to the Riverwalk level slowly and steadily. So I think that's still happening, but could you just like, you know, do a little hand waving and show us how that's gonna work? This is a section question too, by the way, but as for the streets.
Yeah, well, and we didn't put all the sections on the slide, 'cause we'd be on the slideshow, 'cause we'd be here all night and get, go down the rabbit hole. But in context of what you're saying, there would have to be some grade separation, how that occurs and where it occurs from, going east to west. The plan recognizes it and leaves it open. Again, we're conceptual, so there's a lot of variables. We don't even know yet if the arena is gonna go on Block B or Block, excuse me, Block D or Block C. So those things are gonna have that influence, what happens. But to your point, the concept would be ideally is that there's a very gradual grade increase from Pacific Avenue that could go all the way up so that by the time you get to the levee, and you don't even know it, you're just kind of walking along and, you know, there's an apparent grade change, and all of a sudden you're at the levee, no stairs, et cetera. But if that could happen also from Front Street, might be a little bit higher, but it still could be a grade change, or it could be an integration of a series of steps. You know, it's, there's a lot that goes into that. How does the, how does the street meet the building base and all sorts of nasty stuff?
Okay.
This is dream time.
I'm getting too detailed. I love that dream, and I'm worried that if we don't ask for it like right now, you know, never happens.
Right. But the concept is there, and so it's, from a policy standpoint, that's alive.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Dan, good evening.
Thank you. I had a question about the Cliff Street extension there. That's not technically within the red border of the plan area. And so I, like Commissioner McKelvey, really appreciate those improvements for walkability. So I guess I just wanted to know, because it's not technically in this plan area, how are those improvements going to...
Bill says it's coming in the next slideset, but...
I think probably all of my questions are gonna be related to the next section.
I would say to that, one of the project goals, though, of connecting this area better to the beach area as well, this is one of those prime pedestrian connections there.
And so are these improvements anticipated outside of this plan because they're not technically in the border of the plan? Okay, you don't, if we don't know, we don't know, that's fine, too.
For the purposes of acreage and defining the boundary strictly, that's what the red line is, but the connectivity is very much part of the plan. And I'll, there's a couple slides next that I'll talk about what's in there and what the policies are related to what both of your vision is, 'cause you're right on.
Okay, excellent. And then I would also then, I do think improvements should also be made that extend down Pacific in the same manner, because the walkability of that section is not, is not good. And the improvements that were made, I can't even remember when those were done, maybe 20 years ago, and, but the plantings that were put in at that time really don't meet the need. And so, you know, if we're looking at this whole area, then it does seem to make sense to add in that part of Pacific as well.
Yeah, I agree. And there is one or more policies in the plan that talk specifically about improving that as a master planning effort, because there's no street lighting on there, the sidewalks, there's lots of curb breaks, and it's a unfortunate jumbled mess. So I'm right with you.
Agreed. Great, I'm glad we agree on that. Then I also just say that I also think we need parking down here. I know that the Santa Cruz Symphony is also anticipating making use of that arena, and the patrons of the symphony, you know, they're not mostly cyclists and walkers. So I'm on the symphony board, so it's not totally that way, but I just think that realistically we have to anticipate and plan for parking. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you. Let's go to the next session.
Hey, I'm gonna go through this fairly quickly. So basically, we've talked about the community spaces, of which there's seven, and there's policies associated with that. And we're just gonna come up a level, and these, basically streetscape and circulation, we're really just talking about design parameters, you know, like prove, provide high-quality materials, you know, kind of the nuts and bolts pieces of it. There is, related to this, an entire set of street cross-sections, and as I said, we're not gonna, I'm not gonna put all those in tonight, but if you wanna go back and look at them, that gets in the detail of what do these streetscapes actually look like and how are they gonna function? And they've gone through many iterations and refinements, so they're in pretty good shape there in context. I think the key thing there to recognize is that there is, as I noted at the beginning, an effort to push the buildings back. So there's gonna have to be some play there on development area versus the community space, the public realm. But the idea is big sidewalks, ample bike lanes, really creating that public realm in a high-quality manner. So streetscape and circulation, there's policies in here related to basically, you know, seating and the quality of materials, landscaping, how the entire space works, so I'm not gonna get into detail on that. On the pedestrian and bike circulation, I just wanna note that what you're seeing in the conceptual diagram here, all of these streets, with the exception of Center Street, are designed with the cross-sections of either a dedicated, or in the case of the levee, a fully separated bike path. So there is a network, and the idea is to connect this area north with the downtown and south into the beach area, and letting that network continue. So it's complementary to that whole design, master planning effort. Other components with this, you'll see, for example, the idea on the photo on the right side is where you can do separated, where you've got some sort of landscaping that's pulling the cars away from the bikes. In some cases, we're doing that with parking. So there's different criteria and policies in there. And then there's policies in there that respond to how to design the intersections and what they should look like, sizing and radius of curves and all sorts of good stuff in there, that basically focus on really making sure that it's a pedestrian safe space, 'cause that's what really enhances that public realm, is people feel safe in those environments. It takes it a long way in the quality of their experience. So streetscape design, this deals with all of these topics here. Streetscape furnishings or, you know, benches and the hardscape components, trash receptacles, et cetera, landscaping, lighting, et cetera, you can see the list there. So there's policies associated with each of these. And beach connectivity, I've got a couple slides, and then we'll get to beach connectivity. So within the context of those street design policies, there's a couple themes here that I wanna note. One is creating engaging community spaces that we've been talking about. So ample places for seating and gathering, you know, really making the plaza and the side streets, Pacific Avenue or Laurel Street extension, that little tucked-in cove, you know, they're quality spaces that are engaging and promote interactivity, both at a small level and at a community event level. And then the idea of interactive illuminated art, I keep being a big proponent of this 'cause I think if it is an entertainment area, what a great opportunity to do that. And Santa Cruz already does this. They've got this through the Museum of Art and History. They have biannual event called Frequency, and it's all about art, light, and music. I mean, like, okay, there you go. So it could be an expansion of that, complementary. So I don't think there's like anything where we're replacing something. I think the idea is Santa Cruz is seen with the complementary of all these features that all work together and create the vibe that makes Santa Cruz what it is. Beach connectivity, so your comments are right on, so here's the news. So within, I wanna make sure I read some of these, 'cause I don't wanna miss some of them. Bear with me just for a second here. So within the context, there are policies that specifically call out first, improving the streets, excuse me, the stairs that go from the Santa Cruz Riverwalk up to the top of Cliff Street. And so that's gonna need a bit of work. You know, it's, right now, it's a little bit narrow, and there's not enough lighting, et cetera. So the idea is to redesign the Cliff Street stairs and basically to encourage that connectivity. It's the most direct way over to the boardwalk. The other is, and let me use this slide here, it's getting a little covered up, but in the upper right, you can see the view from the top of the stairs. That's a magnificent spot. So the idea for a policy to create a special lookout there that, you know, you can look up the river and the mountains behind and the downtown, so that's a real gem there that we wanna, that capitalizes on with some policy language to improve that. And then lastly is to create a streetscape plan for the Cliff Street corridor. So those two center photos is Cliff Street, looking out towards the ocean, and really just looking at how that can get redesigned. And it probably doesn't take a lot. I mean, there's, there's some existing infrastructure with sidewalks, but the parking changes, sometimes it's angled, sometimes it's paralleled, et cetera. So maybe enhancing the intersections to just tighten them down a little bit and some landscaping, but it could be something that's done fairly cost-effectively and have a really high reward for that connectivity. So that's envisioned per your questions. So with this, we'll go to clarifying questions, and then just for context for timing here, after if there's any clarifying questions on this streetscape and circulation, then Matt's gonna talk about Chapter Four, and it gets into the design guidelines and whatnot, and then there'll be another opportunity on that. So that's kind of the agenda so far. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Dan.
I think I'm good. Thank you.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Any questions on this part?
Commissioner McKelvey.
Just wanna make one observation. The slide that shows the nice kind of plaza with the two streets going off in different directions with buildings, I think it said it was emerging, emerging landscape.
Tiffany's gonna get there?
There, engaging. There isn't any space on this plan that is that scale. That's, that's, that's kind of what my comments were about before with the fact that the street kind of cuts through a pie of buildings.
Yeah.
And I would just like to see a place of more gravity. That's...
Yeah, actually, that lower right is about the scale and width.
Yes, I agree, I agree.
Yeah, that's so...
But this picture on the left...
The picture on the left is meant to just convey the context of gathering spaces and using lighting and illumination and...
I get that.
It's candy.
Yeah.
Needs to be real.
Commissioner Thompson.
I don't have anything.
Councilmember Newsom, Councilmember Brown, Councilmember Watkins.
I just have one question about how the Riverwalk is sort of integrated into this kind of beach connectivity vision. I know you focused on some of the other ways, but I didn't see that stand out.
That is a very good question. So similar to what you see in the northern part of downtown here, where it's going to be no longer having the space between the building and the back of the levee, similar here, and then separated space for people who are biking and people who are walking, and more space for people to slow down also. So kind of spaces, right now, if you're on the Riverwalk and you want to stop and chat or look at the birds or look at the flowers, there's a possibility of bikes going by you. So just more space spread out for people to be moving at different speeds to stop and chat, and to have that connectivity continue all the way down to kind of the base of the log ride there and where we have the Trestle Bridge as well. There's some additional projects that we have going on, so we're committed to improving both north and south on the Riverwalk here.
Okay, great, thank you.
The Vice Mayor is recognized. Councilmember Colin Tari Johnson.
Thank you. Just a brief comment, that interactive illuminated art, I think it's an opportunity for us to connect that to what we're gonna be doing with the downtown alleyway activation.
That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Brunner.
I just wanted to comment on the illuminated art, and again, I go straight to logistics and ensuring that somewhere down the line, it's dark sky compliant and, you know, that we're looking at the context, working with local artists and what that looks like. The concept, yes, I get it, it's great, but I start immediately going to all the details and the logistics of what that means. So we could have so many concepts around that, but at some point, it will need to get a little more focused about what exactly that looks like.
I agree, and great comment. I just wanna note, there are specific policies in there related to night sky and how to do that illumination, so.
Yes.
And the city has a policy already, so it's really enhancing and improving on that.
Yes.
And because of its relationship with the river, it's very important.
I appreciate the circulation. Thank you.
Commissioner Gordon.
I'm still saving mine. Thanks.
Very good, thank you. Next item.
All right, so this is the last section, this is on the downtown plan amendments to the, specifically to the downtown plan as it exists right now. So this relates to development and design guidelines. So this plan would create, would add this, this south of Laurel area to the downtown plan. And so this right here would be the proposed downtown plan area. And so the next couple of slides are gonna show this south of Laurel area in relation to the current downtown plan and how it's brought in. The downtown plan right now has these various districts, and the south of Laurel area would be that southern district in the blue there. And so one important thing, well, the most important thing here is the floor area ratio, and that is, that's the, determines how much is built or can be built on a specific property. So for instance, if you have a 10,000 square foot lot and you have a 10,000 square foot building, that would be a floor area ratio or FAR of one. Or if there's a 20,000 square foot building on that 10,000 square foot lot, it'd be an FAR of two. And that's really what guides a lot of development in our, in our current downtown area. And as you can see in the map on the right there, our existing downtown plan has an FAR of 5.0 throughout the plan. And our proposal currently for the south of Laurel area has those four key blocks, A, B, C, and D. Those are proposed to have a FAR of 4.0, and then the other blocks in, to the, to the west of those, mostly on the west side of Pacific, and then, and then center would have a FAR of 3.5. And so what we see here, based on these FARs, you can do some calculations on approximately how many units would, would come online based on, we did a number of test fits to figure out, you know, prototypes of like what type of building would fit in these projects and how many units would typically be in them. And so we came to a number that, you know, currently without a density bonus, that area would have 950 units as it currently exists right now without this plan. And then with, with... And then with, with the density bonus, that'd be 1,150. So the goal of this plan was to add some housing capacity to this area. Or, sorry, I messed that up. The current, the current has 950 and the, and the density bonus on that would be 1,400. Our, our plan, raising it to 4.0 FAR, that proposal in those areas and then 3.5 for the rest, would increase the housing capacity to approximately 1,150. And, and then a 50% density bonus would get that to approximately 1,750. And so that, that's a really important distinction is that there's, that's a big assumption is that every, every development in every parcel of this area will all, they'll all redevelop and they'll all use a 50% density bonus. And so that's a key thing. You know, I think, I think given a full build-out, it's likely that you would arrive, you know, around that 1,600 as council is directed. This is just the maximum, maximum potential under this, under this scenario. And so maximum building heights, again, you can see the downtown is, there, there's a variety of building heights in the existing downtown. This plan proposes to, the draft plan proposes to carry those tallest heights of the downtown plan into those four key blocks and then have lower heights of 50 and 70 feet, both along that, there, there's a historic designated neighborhood to the, to the west of that area. So we're, this plan proposes to step down to that neighborhood and then the, the blocks south of that would be slightly lower in height as well. And an important feature too is that the areas along Beach Hill also have their own reduced height overlay zone to, to help keep some of that height from being right up against the hillside and those, those neighbors. And so the development standards and design guidelines, so this really builds on the existing downtown standards right now. The look and feel of the, of the downtown currently, walking down Pacific feels wonderful. You have wide sidewalks, really nice interface with the buildings. The buildings look really good. There's so many pieces of the current downtown plan that are working really well. And instead of trying to reinvent the wheel and do something different down here, we really did our best just to pull those existing standards and just bring them south into this area. So that was really the goal there. And then again, focus on ground floor and storefronts. Those are the most important things that people see walking around downtown. When you're walking down Pacific, you're never realizing what each of the building heights are, that you're walking by. It's really important that storefront and benches and landscaping, things like that. And then the land uses also would be similar to the current downtown, just bringing down what would be allowed in our existing downtown into this area, but then also having new standards considering this, this new larger arena that would be built in this area too. Other down, other design standards would be upper stories articulated and architectural details. And then we're still working on exactly what policies would be in place, but we do intend to have policies that, you know, buildings of a certain height would, would start to step back more and more as they go higher to help, to help increase that solar as well as just the look and feel of the building itself and reducing that mass. And then of course, you know, community spaces being created through some of these dedications as well along the sidewalk. And so just really briefly, those standards include the arena like I mentioned. You know, we're really, really looking for landmark architecture that minimizes blank walls, oriented towards that Spruce Street Plaza, includes outward-facing restaurants or retail, and then engages the River Walk. So one really important thing, I've mentioned the density bonus here before. A real key component of this is that when we started this plan, that was under, under state legislation where market rate housing could achieve up to a 50% density bonus. That has since, in the last year and a half, been raised to 100% density bonus. Really significant change from what we were thinking about when we started this plan. And so based on that council direction of keeping, keeping this to 12 stories and 20% below market rate, we can't control what people do with 100% density bonus. They could potentially build above 12 stories, for instance. So it's really important to figure out a way to incentivize development that's beyond the, that state density bonus. And in, in doing, in creating an incentive to do so, having developers keep to that 12-story limit. So planning staff have been thinking a lot about how to do this, and this is the really key element on really meeting council's direction on this, 12 stories and on the affordable housing as well. So we came up with this idea for affordable housing overlay. And so right now, it's still, it's still under, you know, we're still figuring out the exact specifics of this, but the general ideas would be two different options for developers to use, and then they could combine the two of them as well. And that's to essentially receive additional floor area ratio, FAR, in exchange for providing additional below-market units. So for instance, that could be 0.1 FAR for every 1% additional below-market rate unit they provide on the project. More importantly, the one that, the incentive that we see being even more lucrative to the development community is allowing inclusionary to be off-site. Current state density bonus does not allow for that. And, and it's a really important way for developers to build a market rate project and have, have units off-site built by a separate affordable housing developer that can receive, you know, additional federal and state funds, things like that. And given, given the, the type of financing that's involved in that, you can really increase that below-market percentage a lot more than our current inclusionary requirement, for instance. So we're currently contemplating, if, if a developer were to use this off-site inclusionary, that, that amount would have to be 35%, for instance. And, you know, if, if some development were to use this, you know, 35% getting that, you know, we're, we're really getting towards that 20% overall number. And so that, that's really the goal here is if, if a developer were to buy this additional FAR or to want to have their units off-site, they would have to agree to both those affordability requirements, but then also agree to this 12-story height limit. And we see that as the, kind of the key way to get developers going down that potential route versus using the state density bonus where we have a lot less control over in terms of height. And so, like I said, there's ongoing analysis on the method of implementation, you know, whether it's a developer agreement or a codified policy. There's pros and cons to those. And then the off-site incentive as well, thinking about how we would, if, if a developer were to be required to do their development off-site for their affordable, what's the timing of that? There are two different projects with two different financing mechanisms. How do we tie them together? And also the location of them, thinking about the proximity of, of those projects and how far away in the project site can they be, the market rate project versus the, the affordable project? And then, you know, like for instance, one thing we're thinking about is whether it's going to be just within our, the downtown area or some kind of radius, whether it's, you know, 1,500 or 2,000 feet or, and then also considering, you know, excluding places like beach flats and lower ocean to avoid putting additional affordable housing in that area alone to further, you know, to, to spread, to spread it out more, given that those are generally lower income areas. And so next steps, so I mentioned that briefly, we have a public comments through Ju-, July 10th on the draft plan. That's on our website and we're reviewing and incorporating those throughout the summer. The draft DIR will be worked on into the fall with a public review period after that. And then once, once those are complete, we're anticipating getting back to Planning Commission and Council in early 2025. And then we will be submitting to Coastal Commission and, and going through that process through 2025. And so again, that public review, those are to, to our, our senior planner, Sarah Noisy. This is really her baby and I hope I did okay presenting this all on, on short notice, but she did a great job putting the presentation together here. And feel free to send her any comments you have. She's compiling them all right now and we're starting to get them in and look forward to more. And so just briefly, the feedback requested prior to going into this comment section. So talking about the increased affordable housing overlay, general comfort with that concept, that policy concept, and then the location, whether it should only be for sites A, B, C, and D or more. We've currently thought of it as only for those four, four blocks, given that those have kind of the highest development potential and largest block areas for additional building size. And then as well as the current FARs for the majority of this existing south of Laurel area, 3.5, and we're proposing a 4.0 on those blocks, those, those four blocks, which would be a slight upzoning, as you can see here. And there's a few other blocks that have a, a different density requirement of 55 units per acre and, and aren't governed by that FAR requirement. That would, we then propose to change over to this FAR instead. And then the proposed maximum building heights as well. So things to think about as we go into question time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Van Walle. We agree with you. Ms. Noisy does great work for us and on this project, she's been unsurprisingly wonderful. And we miss her this evening, but thank you very much for standing in. What I'm going to do now is start with Councilmember Watkins, go this way, and then I'm going to start with the Vice Mayor and go this way. Councilmember Watkins.
Yeah, no, thank you. And yeah, thanks for stepping in last minute. You did a great job. I'll give some thought to the specific things that you're wanting our feedback on. I have to think about that a little bit more. I want to just say I appreciate your innovation and creativity around trying to kind of meet what our desire is, which is to not have state law really double essentially what we're hoping to have be, you know, in alignment with our community and, and trying to have smart growth in that way. I, I won't go on about how frustrating it's been frankly at the local level to try to manage some of this, so I just want to applaud you for thinking outside the box. That, that said, I'm not really clear about it and I, I'm just sort of trying to understand what that looks like in terms of the off-site inclusionary. And is it going into a fund or are we assuming that they own property elsewhere? I, I just don't understand. And I'm, I'm not sure.
Mr. Butler.
I was just giving Matt one comment and then was volunteered to go and provide the response. I wanted to, to note one thing that, you know, one of the things before, before directly answering your question, Councilmember Watkins, there is a approach where land dedication is required or allowed for state density bonus as well. And also they would still need to meet our inclusionary, which has different criteria for off-site. And so in, in both of those components where we're looking at how we might incentivize the use of the city density bonus or the south of Laurel area density bonus, whatever we call it, over the state density bonus, we really need to make that more attractive. And so for this particular, for the component you were talking about, the off-site, what that would be is something along the lines of a developer wants to develop parcel A. And they say, rather than providing the affordable units on parcel A, we want to provide more affordable units on some alternative parcel. And we would be looking at a substantial increase in the number of affordable units because there's actually quite a, a big benefit to being able to do that off-site. While at the same time, we need to not be so onerous that the developer chooses to use the state density bonus, right? So there's a balancing act there because when the developer chooses to use our city south of Laurel area density bonus, they're also accepting that they will not go over 12 stories. And so they're getting that increased affordability. And what we have just as a, a initial thought in this concept that we've presented is that if it's 100 units in the base project, that they would be looking at 35 units, so a 35% inclusionary if they're looking at off-site. Certainly we'd be open to feedback from the council on that. It's, that is, that percentage, I would say, is less sensitive than onsite inclusionary, for example, because with it being off-site, it's likely that they would be doing 100% affordable project and looking for tax credits. And so that's, that's the concept and.
Can I ask one follow-up question? So the, just apologize for the layperson understanding, but the, the assumption then would be that they own property or they own land off-site.
Or they purchase it.
Or they would purchase land off-site. That would make it, okay.
Right. It's, so, so Pacific Front Laurel and the 205 units that we have there, they did a similar thing for the inclusionary. They didn't use it for density bonus. You know, they dedicated land, which is now Pacific Station South, and we've got 70 affordable units on, on their way there. It's not dissimilar from that, except it would qualify them for the density bonus in addition to meeting our inclusionary requirement.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Councilmember Brown.
I just have one last comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's fine. I just would, the only thing I, I just, I fear that with the whole state allowance to not allow for parking, to add 1,700 units in that already dense area without parking requirements and not a lot of options, and I'm not sure what the public transportation, like, infrastructure will look like, but I don't think we want to lose sight of what that means in terms of impacts to surrounding areas and experience frankly to this draw that we're hoping to create in this, in this area also. So anyways, just wanted to say that I don't have an answer to that, but I, I think we should caution moving forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you. Okay, I have, let's see, I have a clarifying follow-up question because I want to make sure I'm clear about the in-lu option. My, my understanding is that generally with in-lu, the developer pays based on a formula into our affordable housing trust fund, and then that money is used by the city, often in collaboration with other developers to get those projects completed. So, but you're talking about the, the developers who want to be in the south of Laurel area being required to do that themselves? Or you're, you're talking about it as if they would do that themselves? I'm wondering if that's the case or if this would just be another, an overlay that provides additional funding into our affordable housing trust fund and then developers, I mean, they basically are just paying their way out. Just want to clarify what the, how that would work.
Thanks for that question, Councilmember Brown. You're right, in some instances, our inclusionary allows for in-lu fee payments. There's also allowances for land dedication.
Right.
And so what we are contemplating as part of this where they would be eligible for the density bonus would be associated with land dedication.
Only.
Yes. And so that is a, I would say, more challenging component. I mean, our economic. I mean, our economic development and housing director, Bonnie Lipscomb, can speak to that better than I can with her land acquisition experience. But, you know, that is a challenge, right? Is not just having the money, but also acquiring the land, and particularly on sites that have the development potential that can produce a substantial number of affordable housing units. And that's why it worked with the Pacific Station South project is because there is that, the land use allowance is in place to build a large number of units there. So, that's what we'd be contemplating, the land dedication.
Gotcha. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that, because that's what I thought, and then, I was listening, and it sounded like maybe there was more. Okay, thank you. I have another question, and this is really kind of just a very high-level question, and I think I know some of the answer, but I want to ask if, and it may be helpful to go back to the FAR chart about capacity related to FAR, because I'm not clear that going to potentially a 4.0 FAR would just allow for 1,750 units. I mean, it seems to me that there could be more significant increase. Without any, the current capacity being 950, just right on the face of it, don't we have capacity for 1,700 right there? If everybody used 100% density bonus?
Correct. If everyone used 100% density bonus, it would be greater. We're currently showing that 1,400 right now with a 50% density bonus.
So, you're assuming, is there a reason to assume only a 50% density bonus? Given what we're getting in some of the other proposals, pre-applications, we're seeing, I'm not convinced that more developers aren't going to go as big as they can and, you know, in some cases, try to get even beyond, based on the way they do the calculations. So, again, I'm skeptical about the need to, you know, and what this might actually do if we increase the FAR to 4.0. We could see...
Yeah.
Even more than 1,750. We could see potentially, what? I mean, is there anybody down the back of the envelope calculation about what the actual maximum might be?
It is possible too, but we are, again, studying 1,800 units in the E I R, so that would be what's covered under that larger SEQUA study. In terms of the, currently in our downtown, we, you know, number of projects using density bonus, there's the building standards in general. Once you start going over seven, eight stories, you're going into steel construction, significantly cost prohibitive, going beyond that, very difficult to finance and build. And most of those projects downtown that have this 5.0 F A R, for instance, they're largely using the density bonus to waive certain development standards. They're not actually getting a 50% bump in those standards because most of those projects are hitting that natural building limit of, you know, building code, building standards, what projects are typically built at. So, even in the existing downtown right now, projects could go higher than eight stories, but you rarely see them. Most of them are hitting that requirement of what our building code is and the cost that change with going above eight stories. So, it is possible that every single project could go to 100% density bonus and actually use that 100% density bonus and go beyond that. But it's also just as likely they would stay around 50% total or even less. And that's still assuming that every single site develops in this area. And we've already heard from certain property owners that they have no intention of doing anything for their life. So, we know already that some of these sites won't develop likely. Thanks.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that for those of us who are thinking about making this decision, this paints a picture that I think moderates the potential, and I think we need to take that into consideration.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Newsom.
Thank you, Mayor Keely. I have just a quick clarifying question, just trying to make sure I completely understand the concept that was presented to us. So, the stated policy of the council is for buildings in the area to be no higher than 12 stories and for 20% of the units to be affordable units. And the concept that was presented is to present developers with incentives that are sweeter or more attractive than the state density bonus law. And in return for developers taking those incentives, they agree to adhere to our policy goals of buildings being no higher than 12 stories and 20% of all units built being affordable housing. Do I have that correct? Is that...
Correct. Yeah, or even a greater percentage if they were to choose this off-site option.
Right.
It would be greater than our inclusionary requirement, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Fred. Just wanted to make sure I had that correct. Thank you.
Councilmember, excuse me, Commissioner Thompson.
Actually, I think that they've done, the staff's done a good job of explaining the math as well as we can, given how many variables there are and how the calculations can be made, and how kind of loose and goosey the state has been with making changes. So, I think that this is the right place to land in terms of what we're trying to accomplish these days. It's sobering to see, though, how complicated it has become. And so, I think this is the right approach. I think we'll still have to think long and hard about project proposals as they come forward. So, I think we're trying to do the right thing and use the right tools. I don't have anything more to suggest tonight, that's for sure.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner McKelvey.
Thank you, Mayor Keely. Just two things. One, the, I think it might be helpful the next time, or in this next round of kind of analysis, if we could have maybe some examples or a direct comparison between the mechanisms that already exist in our inclusionary requirement and how this might differ. I know that it's all, you know, kind of for, just grist for the mill right now, but there are a number of different ways of satisfying the inclusionary requirement already, and it would be good to know how we balance that, the incentives, and kind of get the most out of it in terms of what we're about or objectives.
Yeah, thank you for that comment. Definitely agree. That's something, those specifics, we're still working on. We're also thinking about, should a developer, you know, do this off-site project and go beyond and be required to go beyond our inclusionary? What is that, you know, what's the affordability percentage? Is it the same as our inclusionary? Or do we want to, you know, going on with that incentive, make it higher than the current inclusionary in terms of the affordability? Thinking about moderate, missing middle, or, you know, workforce housing levels of affordability as well, and building those into that requirement too, might also make it more feasible, but still be below market rate versus our current inclusionary, which is lower income. So, yeah, thinking about that balance and getting that right, something we're definitely still going to be working on quite a bit.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Kennedy.
So, without stating I'm in favor of it, like, what would happen if we did just require parking for an arena or a mixed-use project? They, I'm just working out all this, this whole new game we have, but they have unlimited exemptions for cost, right?
The shortest answer is that we can't.
If you feel like it costs money, then they can just nuke it. But then, at least, we're sticking up for every neighbor I've talked to in the last two months who says it's too much. You know, it'd be like a shallow gesture, but could we do that?
No. Except, yeah, no.
I know, I just wanted to explore it because I feel the people on the playground coming to me and saying, where are people going to park? I should point out, we heard this with the last one you stated.
I'll give you one caveat. We can require it for employees of the arena. That is the narrow, narrow, narrow cutoff where we can.
Okay. There you go. So, my second and last question, kind of comment, is can we require measured section drawings? I mean, I know there's a lot we're not seeing here. To me, like, because I've had architectural training, it really helps to put things in perspective of like, is a 16-story building really that tall? It drives me nuts. The developers put the little people in the building, and then, the neighbors' lot, there's like no little people because it would show how tall that thing is. So, could we require any project in this zone, you know, do a section that way and a section that way, like from the river to the neighborhood? And what do you think about that?
Great call. We have those. Happy to go through them in more detail. We've been getting down to inches in the transportation cross-sections and how that relates, the streetscape relates to the buildings. So...
And the residential neighborhoods.
And the residential neighborhoods, yeah.
Commissioner Dan.
Thank you. Just have a couple of things. And I mean, I guess I'd start just to say that I think that this conversation about housing really underscores how difficult it is to craft a future planning document when we have a state that keeps pulling the rug out from under us. And so, I mean, we're here discussing, you know, this housing for this area, and we don't really know what the next legislation that's coming down the pike, which may completely upend what it is we're trying to do here. So, you all have a very tough job because you're the final decision-makers on that. So, I did also have one clarifying question about the off-site housing option. And so, is it contemplated that if that's offered, that a developer takes up that option, that the land dedication would be in, could be in, you know, A, B, C, or D, that they own a parcel and kind of like the Anton building, they dedicate a portion of that parcel for an affordable unit, and then, thus, there would be a separate market-rate housing unit and then, an affordable housing unit building?
That would certainly be, thanks for the question, by the way, that would certainly be one way to do that. Another way, potentially more likely way, might be across the street or a few blocks away, whatever parcel that can be purchased by that developer. And so, we're contemplating, you know, what is that proximity? Is it within the downtown plan, some kind of radius, things like that?
Great. I saw that discussed, and so, that kind of leads to the second question. And what is the argument for, like, a distance requirement? So, and, you know, I agree that it's probably not appropriate in the beach flats area. There might be other places in the city that are in the same situation as beach flats and south of Laurel. So, I guess I would just say, probably some deep thinking needs to go into whether or not, you know, we're going to require where that has to be and how difficult it might be. So, if somebody, you know, developer is building a 12-story project that could have 500 units in it, 35%, that's 175 affordable units would be fantastic, but that's not no easy task to find a, you know, piece of land that's affordable and would work for that. So, I don't know, I had caution against limiting options there.
Correct. Yeah, thank you for that comment. Yeah, I think the thinking there initially was both given the downtown has, you know, it's very amenity-rich, there's generally less parking with affordable housing projects and being even closer to transit, and then, also, you know, keeping some spirit of the inclusionary element and keeping that mix of incomes, you know, within a certain area versus just the building itself. But that's a good point, too. I mean, we need affordable housing, more affordable housing everywhere.
Yeah, and I don't know that there is a right answer. I'm not advocating any...
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. The Vice Mayor is recognized.
My question was about, when I was looking at one of the maps, a few maps back, and with the heights for the different areas of downtown, and there was one slide that showed right there, yeah. So, I think we all, the elephant in the room, that 18-story clock tower building that's, they had the planning meeting and the pre-design stuff submitted, I think that's over 50 feet. So, how can, how, you know, if now, if we're going to 85 here, I'm almost asking, this sounds rhetorical, but why are we even doing this? Can't they just build whatever they want?
Yeah, thank you for that question.
I hate to be so blunt, but people are asking me that, so...
Yeah.
You're right, I don't hate it. I love being blunt.
Yeah, thank you. I agree, you know, that is difficult, but what we, we certainly can't assume that every project is going to use the density bonus to the maximum extent, and they certainly, it's likely they won't. And so, in bringing these heights down, really, we're looking at what base projects could be. It's important to think about, too, if we get some of these development scenarios right, you know, it also disincentivizes the use of density bonus to get around those standards as well. So, 85 feet right now, for instance, in those four blocks that we show, that's kind of that natural cutoff of those building heights in general, which is how that numbers come about. That's actually a building code at 85 feet. The second you go above that, there's different fire standards, there's different building standards, and the costs increase substantially. So, 85 feet's this natural cutoff where if we see just a base project not using density bonus, that's actually a really feasible height for a typical project. So, the goal would be to get in those, within those bounds to not need a density bonus, but it's not to say that, you know, someone couldn't, and we do see it often, typically not above 85 feet.
I just have one final thought, and that is basically piggybacking on what Commissioner Dan said, in that with the changing regulatory landscape at the state level, I know many of us in the room and in the community would like to see the permanent arena built within our lifetime and not have this sit on a shelf somewhere. And I think it would behoove us to help get this area redeveloped in a timely manner before the rules just keep changing, and then, we end up with, excuse me, skyscrapers, when that's not what we want, and trying to work with the current owners and the people that are, you know, willing to do this work within this lifetime so that we can actually see this land come to fruition. So, I appreciate all of the work. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Councilmember Colentari Johnson is recognized.
Thank you. To a point that I believe Commissioner Dan made earlier around the financing of public amenities, it was lightly touched on in the report in this section, that we could consider conditions of approval that would contribute to the financing of public spaces. What would it look like for us to have a policy direction that across the board, we would have a development fee that would go into the pot of money, or a pot of money for public amenities? Could we do that? Could we consider that policy direction? What would that look like? Is it legal? Would it stop all development? Could we do it?
Thanks for that question, Councilmember Colentari Johnson. So many things that we get questions for are answered with maybe. So, yes, there's the possibility that we could do that with respect to an impact fee. The council is likely aware of the recent Supreme Court case in Sheets versus El Dorado County that puts even stricter regulations on cities as they relate to the nexus studies associated with impact fees. And so, we would need to analyze how that could potentially be done with identified public improvements that the city would be wanting to make as it relates to arts or other types of enhanced public facilities, and then, attribute the percentage of those improvements to the new developments and not to the city as a whole. And so, some funding could be generated in that respect. And so some funding could be generated in that respect, but there's certainly a significant nexus study hurdle that we would need to get over, and that analysis would, we would have to do in depth.
Okay. So at the appropriate time and space, I would like to provide that direction. I don't know if it's today or a different time. I know today's consensus space.
So this is a good opportunity to, to understand how we will provide direction. Rather than doing it by motion, what we'll do is do it by consensus. So the gentlelady may have something. I absolutely have something we'll be discussing later. So we'll see, we'll do it rather than by motion, we'll do it by consensus.
Maybe after public comment, yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you. So what other piece? The, so exciting that we will have new retail space come into this area. And I know there's a lot of intention and policy direction and work that's gone into our existing downtown and filling in the retail space. So I guess it's a question, comment. How are we thinking about filling in the retail space, hopefully in our lifetime? And will it be an extension of the strategies that we are, have in place and are thinking of putting in place for our current downtown? I see Ms. Lipscomb nodding, so.
Yes, Councilmember Colentari Johnson, thank you for that question. Yeah, we are looking at a variety of policies and incentives right now in our existing downtown, both looking at more flexible, the opportunity to have pop-up in some of our, our existing downtown locations and retail spaces. I think the key word is flexibility and the need to be flexible and to adapt as times change. And we are in a period of sort of retail uncertainty. There's a lot of volatility, and we need to be flexible. I think also one of the visions for this area is it's looking at sort of that expanded sort of entertainment district with some art elements to it, is being flexible within that sort of perspective and vision for the area as well as far as some of those ground floor uses. And as far as just one other thing that we're talking about as, to that flexibility is allowing periods of time up to a year, et cetera, where you can be a little more flexible in what some of the, the ground floor spaces are, and allowing for activation in creative ways.
Mr. Butler.
Thank you. I'd, I'd like to add one thing to the prior comments, which was focused, those were focused on the impact fees and a nexus study associated with those. But Director Lipscomb spoke about the Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District and Community Facilities District. And so there are alternative mechanisms by which we could achieve the same objective. And if the council's contemplating direction by consensus, of course, then having that more broadly, that, that broad goal would be better so that we could explore multiple avenues to potentially achieve that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Bruner.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for speaking about the financing. I know that was also some of the input we've received and some of the emails as well, some of the questions around who will pay the fees on any of the non-grant funded costs and how, how that will work. I think, you know, this is looking again at kind of this conceptual plan for this area. And, and there are still a lot of unknown, but a lot of good questions. And I have some questions around the commercial spaces, so I'm glad you spoke to some of that. And I, I think from what I have heard over time and what I've seen is that it's, it will be super beneficial to have flexibility in commercial space. And there was even one member of the public who wrote in some comment asking about will there be affordable commercial space, not just affordable housing, but affordable commercial space? And as we look to the future of retail, we all know how much that has changed in the last 10, 20, 30 years, especially with online shopping. I know Santa Cruz is great in, in making the effort to support local. So we've moved away from large department stores and these huge 10-year leases that sit empty. There are still empty vacancies on these large spaces in the current downtown district. So thinking about what those commercial spaces are, I really would like to just speak for the people who I've heard from and from myself that having them be smaller, flexible, live-work, different uses, experiential retail, you know, keeping it broad and not limiting it so that it can truly be community-serving. And thinking also about community needs in terms of childcare, grocery stores, those basic necessities with all these residential components coming in right all around that area, making sure there's no food desert, for example, and not just restaurants to eat out at, especially for low-income people who can't afford to eat out at restaurants all the time. So really, those commercial spaces are huge, and that arts and culture-serving need of having live-work, even if it's a separated, I don't know if that's an official term that means one thing, but having, you know, resident apartment unit and, you know, across the street, there's little studios. Like, having flexibility is going to be key moving forward. I really hope that we can keep that in mind with, as this plan moves forward and evolves and all those little unknowns start falling into place and how we, how we make that into our policy for this area. Did you want to comment on that?
Yeah. Thank, thank you, Councilmember Bruner. Those were great comments, and we'll, we'll definitely take them to heart going forward. I did want to point out in the plan, I mentioned how important it was to bring all these great standards in our current downtown plan, south into this area. One standard that we actually did propose changing was decreasing retail and commercial size requirements in mixed-use buildings for that very reason, to allow for more flexibility and cheaper spaces.
Yes, the smaller, little micro, like shared, shared vendor spaces, markets, you know, Abbott Square Market is, is an example of that, and they're all over the Bay Area. You know, there are many different types of commercial spaces, so. And what's current in our city is very limiting. And, you know, there's so many wonderful, like, traveling the world, you can see so many creative ways of how commercial spaces serve the needs of the community in, in really enriching ways. And so, yeah.
Thank you.
The other thing I wanted to say is, oh, did you want to add to that?
Yeah, if I could, I just wanted to add one thing about our downtown kiosks and our downtown POPS program that I should have mentioned earlier, but, or sort of resonate with what you were just talking about. And so our kiosk program is a city subsidized program. Those are city-owned sites, as you, as you know and are familiar with them. And so one of the ideas, too, in this area is that we could have other opportunities for sort of newly-visioned sort of kiosks or even the little micro, you know, retail or little restaurant pop-ups that give an opportunity for entrepreneurial businesses, for new ideas, new concepts, and less risky. And that's the same concept with our downtown POPS program, and that is a city subsidized program. And of course, as you all know, it started during the pandemic as a, as a response to, you know, vacant spaces and, and being able to activate. A similar concept in the, in the south of Laurel area would be to take advantage of, and a recommendation to the council to consider is expanding our downtown POPS program to this area so that we could consider that as well. It's both less risky for new businesses, entrepreneurial ideas, but also for owners of those spaces to try a new concept. So that's something we would recommend as a policy in this area as well.
Thank you. Yeah, those low-income commercial spaces, incubator spaces, startup spaces. It takes a lot to, to do a, a brick-and-mortar business. And if we don't allow for that and people primarily shop online, we don't get the sales tax. And, and we don't get the benefit of supporting, a lot of these are family, local people that, you know, could be someone sharing their art or their makings or, you know. And there's so many endless possibilities. So thank you. Keeping that in mind, yes. This is just a quick comment on the Sola Plaza. I think it sounds for south of Laurel, and you also had mentioned Spruce Street Plaza. So is that the same thing, just two different terms? I just wanted to clarify on that.
Yes, it's the same thing with two different terms. It's kind of evolved. I think the preferred is Spruce Street Plaza, so we could make that more consistent.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that, I thought. And then there was a question about the 85 feet, 75 feet. And my understanding is on like how many stories that is? Like, when we talk about feet and stories, 85 feet sounds like a lot, and that's about, what, eight stories? What is that? There's a formula that you can average. How many stories is 85 feet?
Typically, it would be about seven stories. The, the calculation would be, usually there's a 15-to-20-foot ground floor for the retail commercial component, and then about 10 feet per story after that. Sometimes they're just slightly higher or lower than that, give or take. But that's, that's a typical calculation. And 85 feet, you can get eight stories in if you do like a mezzanine on the first floor or top floor, for instance. And that's how you can get to an eight-story project in 85 feet, for instance. 15 plus, plus seven, 10 above it.
That's helpful. I think going forward, too, it would be helpful also to maybe have the feet and slash stories just for a better concept and understanding.
Yeah, we, we've certainly gone back and forth on that. I'll, we'll definitely figure out a way to maybe make that more clear. But, yeah, given, you know, depending on how tall someone makes the ground floor, changes how many stories there are.
Right? 85 feet is, you know, 16-story clock tower application that was submitted? Or, you know, is it the El Palomar building that is downtown, right? And so just having that, some kind of context.
85 feet would typically be like the, the Pacific Front Laurel project that, that's going in right now.
Okay. Okay, and I think that, that, that's it for my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Commissioner Gordon.
I think I'm going to skip. I'm assuming we are going to still have discussion because this is clarifying question time, and I think the public is here to share, so.
Thank you, Commissioner. We are now going to go out to public comment. There are going to be a couple of ways we're going to work on this. First of all, one person has requested additional time, and I'm going to acknowledge that person first. And then what we will do is we'll take, just line up, and we'll take people in the order in which you line up. In the event that there are folks who want to comment online, we'll take one person in line, then one person online, then one person in line, then one person online. This is how we do all council meetings, for those of you who have not participated in this way of doing things. So let me acknowledge Mr. Hall, if he is still here. We will take his testimony. Mr. Hall, good evening. Welcome.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor Keeley, and thanks to all of you really for a very enlightening session so far about a crucial topic. I want to start out by giving you all a gift from our town, our downtown, our future, which I think really cuts the heart of some of the details of things you're going to have ahead, ahead of you. And it's Jan Gell's book, Cities for People. And I have one volume for the city council and the mayor, and another volume for the Planning and Community Development Department.
Mr. Hall, if you'd be kind enough to give that to the clerk, she'll accept that on our behalf, and thank you very much for that.
So, and I think Jan Gell's, he's a professor of urban planning and an architect in Copenhagen, and has some really good ideas. So it's worth looking at for the kinds of details that face you going forward. I think there's also a kind of a holistic problem here that has to be addressed. You have a lot of really interesting components, a lot of interesting ideas. I really appreciate some of the suggestions and comments that people have made about flexibility in business spaces and some of the problems that have been raised. The gestalt of it for me is a concern that the overall project may just be too big for the downtown infrastructure to bear. And several of you have mentioned parking problems, the issue of where are people going to park? I don't want to see a lot of people driving downtown to park, but I did tonight, and I bet many of you did as well. And also, importantly, the traffic volume. I haven't seen anywhere in that report, maybe I missed it, it's a big set of documents, a report on, an analysis of the volume of traffic and how that will be accommodated when you have that significant an increase in housing units and an entertainment district and perhaps an arena. If you step back from it, an imaginary exercise to do, I doubt that you'll follow this line, but one thing to think about would be, well, what if you solve that problem by locating the arena someplace else? And I'm thinking, if I were coming to Santa Cruz and I had a blank slate in which to decide where to put things, I would put that arena at River Street and Highway 1 in the shopping center that's there that has lots of parking, lots more space, lots more highway access and so forth. And it would be in sort of northern anchor of the downtown and leave this area of downtown for the very interesting possibilities of the arts district, the entertainment district, and so forth that could be there. If you don't do something like that, I fear that you're going to create an immense problem that probably won't be faced for another 10 years or so. But in 10 or 15 years, people are going to be using unfortunate language to describe the situation that they, they could be facing. The other thing that I think is important, and I'll just close with this, is the scale of the project relative to human social life in cities. And this, again, is something that Jan Gell's speaks to. After you get buildings of a certain height, beyond a certain height, the people who are living in the buildings, he argues, lose contact with the street. They see the street as just a way of getting from one place to another. Now, we can debate that point. We can talk about that point, but it is worth considering height. Can we achieve the purposes of a city within a height limit of, say, 10 stories after the density bonuses are in there? And it's, I got to say that the presentations were excellent, except that the, the array of data about how high things would actually end to be, you, you feel like you're playing a little bit of pinball. But I want to suggest, keeping the height limit down would be an achievement that would increase the viability of it as a community space. Thanks very much for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. We have someone online, Ms. Bush. We'll take that person, then we'll take the gentleman here. First online, good evening. Welcome.
Yes, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I am very excited about this plan because we're including space for people, for pedestrians who are mingling, that is not going to be dominating. who are mingling, that is not going to be dominated by automobiles. I very much encourage you to consider more of this, because when you design a city for people, then you get it filled with people. When you design a city for automobiles with lots of parking, you get lots of automobiles and no room for the people. And the people don't feel safe because the automobiles are large, heavy, fast, and make it difficult for people to get around. So I would encourage you to not think so much about parking, not think so much about subsidizing more automobile space, and think more about this space for people. One of the first questions was about how are we gonna pay for this infrastructure for people? But then all these people come along and say, oh, but we need more parking. Well, you're gonna have to pay for that infrastructure too, you know? That's a lot more expensive, especially the council member who suggested underground parking. That's just completely ridiculous, in my opinion. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name's Joe Quigg. I'm a developer, I also live in this area, on Pacific Avenue, we own a little hotel. And when I first heard about this and saw my hotel torn down and replaced by a stadium, I was quite surprised. But now that I've seen all the work that's gone into it, I kind of, you know, being a developer at heart, feel like I don't want to stop this from happening. And one of the things I strongly suggest, and I think it would work, is if all of the owners got together, if you were able to get the owners of all these properties together. It seems to me that they'd be more open to doing this if it was done in a fashion where they were, they figured out what they were gonna do with their, with the sale of their properties, or how they were gonna move, or where they were gonna move, and they could actually incorporate moving into the production of the neighborhood. And it would work. It could happen all at the same time. You could actually get it done in our lifetimes, which is really what you want to do. Right now, I am not in any mood to sell my property. I know two other owners that are not in the mood to sell, but I would be convinced if we could do something like that. And I'd hate to be the one to stop this from happening. I think it is a good thing for the city. And somebody mentioned a development team. Is that a development team that the city has put together? Is that a private development team that's been contacting me, trying to find out what's going on in that area? I think the owners should be the ones making the money on this when they sell, not the developers who are gonna come in, put the deal together, and then sell it to another company, make more money. It's my bell, so. Other things to say, but I'll be around.
Mr. Quigg, thank you very much. Person online, Ms. Bush. We'll take that next person online. Good evening, welcome. Person online, good evening. We'll take the next person in line here.
Sorry, just a second there, I mean, no.
No, not, no, we're gonna wait, you're gonna wait. Good evening.
Hello, good evening, my name is Brian Shields. I'm a field rep with Carpenter's Local 505. And I just wanted to take a moment. Beautiful, a lot of work, I could see that, you know, mayor, council and commission. Appreciate the moment to get to speak here. I just wanted to take a moment to also highlight the fact that labor would need to build this, right? And you have a massive opportunity here to invest in the local workforce through some just key things like apprenticeship and healthcare, whatever, whatever level it is, right? But having that apprenticeship will continue to build builders in this community and provide, you know, blue-collar, middle-class opportunity to folks such as myself. Before I got in the union, I was non-union, I made $15 an hour, and I built multi-million-dollar mansions. And no healthcare, yada, 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 so on and so forth. So at this point in time, you know, I get to be a married man, I do own a little piece of land in Santa Cruz County, and I'm proud, and also a father, and my daughter has healthcare. You know, we're able to survive here and live here and invest here and spend our money here and all of those things. So I want to be able to provide this opportunity, and I know I'm looking at a lot of nodding heads here as well, to the next generation, to the folks that are gonna get to build this thing. Because it'll be a huge, huge, huge investment in the community and, of course, the workforce. So thank you so much, I appreciate the time.
Thank you, sir. Next person online, good evening, welcome.
Hi, council members, this is Rick Longinotti from the Campaign for Sustainable Transportation. I want to address parking and transportation in the south of Laurel, because I think that the city has an opportunity to actually reduce the amount of automobile ownership through providing incentives. And the incentive would be to unbundle, to require the developers unbundle the cost of parking from the cost of renting or owning a unit. In other words, you go to rent an apartment and you pay separately for the parking space. Or if you don't own a car, you opt out of paying for that parking. We have a downtown currently where in most downtown census tracts, between 15% and 33% of households don't even own a vehicle. 55% of renter households own one vehicle or less. So this idea of unbundling, it allows tenants to opt out, and that reduces their cost of housing. It also reduces vehicle ownership, and I can send you studies in San Francisco where unbundling is required, where the amount of vehicle ownership is significantly reduced because of this unbundling. So it is a both strategy for affordability in both market rate and below-market units, but it's also a strategy to reduce vehicle ownership, keeping the traffic to a minimum. There are other things that can be done, which is already being done. The Pacific Shores apartment on the very west side of Santa Cruz, where the developer was required to provide bus passes for all the tenants, that could be done. Developers could provide a low-cost subscription to the B-cycle, electric bicycles. There are a lot of ways to reduce the amount of cars on our road, and I encourage you to build that in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Longinotti. Thank you for all of your work in the community after, for so many decades. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you, and good evening.
Good evening.
Members of the council and the planning commission. My name is Andy Schifrin, and I'm speaking this evening with my personal views as a Santa Cruz resident. The city council adopted major revisions to the city's general plan and the downtown plan during the 2010s. The revisions were approved after a robust community planning process and responded to concerns about the high housing prices at the time. The revised general plan and downtown plan allowed for significant housing density increases along the major transportation corridors and in the downtown. While not universally applauded, the increased general plan densities represented what the city council decided was a reasonable vision for future development in the future, in the city. The expectation at the time by community members and the city council was that the maximum densities in the general plan would be the maximum densities that could be permitted. That was the reality of the time. That's not the reality anymore. The legislature and the governor have fundamentally changed our reality. The law giving developers the right to double-density bonuses means that whatever the approved general plan density is, it can now be doubled at the request of a developer, and it's their right. So if the maximum density along so-called Avenue is 60 units per acre, it can, it's now by right 120 units an acre. If the development allowed in the downtown is in a flurry ratio of five, it's now 10 at the developer's option, as the council is seeing, is aware of what's happening with the 16-story building. That building is now proposed at about 560, about 550, 60 units an acre.
Hold on just a second. We have three minutes on these, and I think we were setting the clock at two, so take an extra minute, Mr. Schifrin. That's my air.
Thank you very much. Okay. The staff, I'm urging, what I wanted to just do is urge the council to keep this reality in mind as you consider increased, the staff-recommended increased densities in the south of Laurel area. Because under, with increased densities, there is going to be the ability, maybe every developer won't use it, but every developer will be able to use that increased density for more development. And I want to go back to that chart that was on the line, because I think you can get a sense of what's allowed. 950 units without a density bonus, 1,400 units with a 50% density bonus, 1,900s with another 50% density bonus. So under the current density, you could get the 1,600 units you want without changing the density at all. Under the proposed, it goes from 1,750 to 2,300. So it's, I think it's important to face the new reality and recognize that there's no need to change your general plan densities, that's your right. You can't lower them, but you can decide not to raise them. Thank you very much, I'm sorry I took extra time.
It's quite right, thank you, sir. Is there a person online, Ms. Bush? We'll take that person, then we'll be right with you, sir.
Hi, thank you, this is Kyle Philly, current transportation commissioner and school board member, speaking in a personal capacity. So I want to comment on, if we look to our objective standards, we actually are gonna get funding from developers depending on how much is actually built. So we codify that both in square footage requirements, or what we get back for transportation funding, or what we can do for infrastructure. So putting aside kind of what people feel about parking, there's a lot of needs that are within the city that are addressed with getting additional infrastructure that we're certainly not gonna get under Prop 13 Protected Properties throughout the city. So getting property tax turnover, additional fees. And might add, now that I understand the schools budgets, we're a basic aid district, so our elementary schools are greatly impacted by getting new turnover in property and to get additional funds coming into the schools. So aside from every other reason, and I come and speak often about, about housing in general and the deep need that we have for housing in our city, there's also immense opportunity to get revenue back for the city here. So, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, my name is Brett Gillett, and I have some brief comments about transportation, lighting and flooding. One thing about transportation, I believe Santa Cruz has a Vision Zero policy, so I suggest these documents should explicitly call for compliance with the safety principles of Vision Zero. The project also has an explicit goal of improving connectivity between downtown and the beach, so I want to suggest a better way to do that. Personal Rapid Transit, or PRT. It's an alternative form of transit that transcends the usual compromises that often come up when designing a transportation system. Personal Rapid Transit involves small automated electric vehicles traveling on a dedicated network of guideways, probably overhead, completely separate from the roadways and sidewalks, and therefore very compliant with the Vision Zero policy, very safe. A PRT system could connect downtown to the beach with additional boarding zones at all the large developments, kind of like providing an elevator where you can go from one place to another without stopping at all the floors in between. That's better than an elevator. I believe the large developers will be very willing to include a PRT boarding zone and subsidize this PRT system because it would dramatically reduce the need to accommodate automobile traffic. It would reduce the need for them to build parking. Parking spaces are expensive, and everyone wants to avoid automobile congestion. And now is the time to plan for a PRT system that is fully integrated into any new construction. A quick comment on lighting, for the sake of the birds and other nocturnal creatures and the environment, please minimize upward lighting and other light pollution. I was kind of horrified by the image in the appendix draft of the new stadium with an enormous billboard powered by LED lights. Please don't do that, that's just my gut reaction to that. Flooding, I want to mention, the entire project is in a flood plain. There's always a strong risk of flooding. Levees do fail from time to time. Flood insurance costs are going up like crazy. Every new building here should be designed to survive a flood, kind of like the building at the, the housing at the Tannery. I'm reading this book that has extensive details about the failures of dams and levees called Seek Higher Ground. It's a powerful warning that new development should actually be located outside of floodplains. I'm really worried about flooding for the proposed library and also for these new south-of-lawer projects. So back to my original topic, what kind of transportation could work during a flood? An elevated PRT system, of course. So, yeah, so I'm somewhat skeptical of this project, but if we're gonna build it, please include an elevated PRT system that could be subsidized by developers. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We have a person online. We'll take the next person online. Good evening, welcome.
Hi, this is Frank Barron, can you hear me? Hello?
Good evening.
Yes, I agree with Andy Schifrin, he said it much better than I could, but basically the Clock Tower Center project showed us that the developers can go far higher than what the zoning height limits are. And so keep that in mind. I would say, don't raise the height limits. The warriors can get their full eight stories, that they said that they could do their entire project for eight, with eight stories instead of 12. New arena, 1,600, you know, housing units, 20% affordable, eight stories max. That can be done under current zoning. You don't need to go to, you know, you don't need 12-story buildings, you don't need to upzone the areas that are, you know, being proposed to be upzoned with the downtown plan. I like everything, you know, almost everything else about the downtown plan. A lot of the, you know, the public space stuff, the amenities is great, the arena, keeping the warriors here, that's great. I do have a flooding concern, however, and that is, you should never add fill dirt into a floodplain. That's, you know, hydrology, you know, floodplain planning 101. It displaces floodwaters, it makes, you know, when the flood does come, it's gonna push the floodwaters out further and make them higher. So adding that wedge of material to, you know, make the top of the levee flush with the ground level, I think is a big mistake. That's all I got, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Keeley, council members, commissioners, Gillian Greenside. I understand that the suggestion to increase the FAR is intended as an incentive for developers not to take advantage of the density bonus. I think that needs a lot more thought. I would urge you not to increase the FAR. I say that because the recent Zoom meeting on the 16-story clock tower project, I had a hard time understanding how in an area that is zone 35 feet, you could allow something 16, well, I know it's not gone through as a project, but you could even suggest a building of 16 stories. So I asked questions online, and after three questions, I got my answer. And then I followed up with a planner, and the answer is, there is no height limit. The developers can go whatever height they want. And I was disappointed that that wasn't brought forward by staff at this meeting. And the, so I said, well, if they can go whatever height they want, what is it based on? And it's based on the number of units. Well, I said, what is that based on, zoning or what? And it was peeling back the layers, and it basically is whatever they propose, but it's related to the FAR. it's related to the FAR. So if you increase the FAR, and that is in place, there's nothing stopping a developer saying, well, that's nice, but I'm going to take advantage of the density bonus, and it's 100%, and the sky's the limit. And so I would have liked to have heard from staff a little bit more, the bad news in a way, of what we're facing here in terms of height. I appreciate the mayor's original scaling it down from what it was, which was sort of mind-boggling. I thought it was a sort of a joke until I realized, we all realized it wasn't. One question perhaps you could share for the public is, how can you legally cap a height in one area of town if it's free-for-all in other areas? Is that realistic, or is it just hopeful? And so I'd like a lot more realism, perhaps, from staff as we go forward. Just in terms of visual aids, a little pointer at where you're looking at on the map would be very helpful for those of us in the audience. And lastly, I know there'll be a lot of chants with the, the EIR, but don't forget that this corridor is where the whole lower west side accesses the other side of town, not just visitors. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Greenside. Do we have someone else online, Ms. Bush? We'll take that person online. Good evening, welcome to the council meeting.
Good evening, Mayor Keely, council members. This is Chris Murphy, president of the Warriors. Appreciate everybody's time today. Sorry that I couldn't be there in person. I just wanted to make two quick comments. One, you know, reaffirming the Warriors' commitment to, to an arena in Santa Cruz and wanting to call this area home for a long time to come. Fred and I had another conversation today, you know, really just talking through the, how important it is for, for us as the Warriors. This has been our home for the last 13 years, 12, 13 years, and this is where we'd like to be able to work together with the community, with the city, with other partners to, to make a permanent home that we're really excited about. We also talked further, Fred and I, about kind of the 12 stories, approximately 1,600 units, 20% affordable component, you know, and I had another conversation with the development group that we're working with, and just want to reaffirm for all as well that, like, we're very much still on board with this plan and, and support this plan. No, there, there are still so many things that are unknown, as everybody has been mentioned today. There's still a lot of variables out there. There's no concrete plan, you know, set to share today. But what we are committed to is like continuing to hear community feedback from all walks of the community, continuing to be a good partner to the community of Santa Cruz and to the city of Santa Cruz and the county, and to hopefully continue to be able to make memories here in Santa Cruz for a really long time to come. So thank you, Mayor Keely, all council members, the commission, and the city staff that's been amazing to work with so far. So thank you. I appreciate everybody's efforts, and we'll continue to work together towards making this a reality.
Mr. Murphy, thank you very much, and happy birthday to your daughter. That's why he's not here. His daughter honored birthday. Good evening, sir.
Thanks, Fred.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Keely, council, and planning commissioners. My name is Jim Sandoval, and I'm a resident of Beach Hill, Third Street. And we have a great neighborhood, and I'd say in the last 10 years, it's become more of a neighborhood. When we, when I first moved there 20 years ago, it was very much a tourist and student-type neighborhood with just a lot of changeover. So we're feeling like, gosh, we wish we were a neighborhood conservation zone, because we're a historic area, and we have block parties, and we visit each other and have dinner parties. And so, you know, this plan could be a great thing. You know, we're worried about, the biggest thing is traffic. You know, the elephant in the room is that it's currently gridlocked during the summer, and none of us can leave our homes on Saturdays or Sundays to go to Shopper's Corner or San Lorenzo Lumber after 10:00 AM, because it literally takes an hour to get home. And so you are a lot of smart people that can kind of figure out a way, let's, if we're going to bring in 1,600 housing units and big commercial space and an arena with 200 or more events a year, I mean, there's going to be a lot of perfect storms that could happen with traffic, you know? How can we divert the current tourist traffic from this whole area? All the wayfinding apps have made every street in, in the whole beach area discoverable, and so it's literal gridlock. So this is an opportunity, a big opportunity to, you know, create this development, but also address a big issue that's, you know, citywide, and it'll become more citywide as this thing expands. I totally agree with Mr. Schiffern and Mr. Barron about, you know, sticking with existing zoning heights and density will get you to what you want with the numbers, given the density bonuses and whatnot. So I totally concur with that. And then also, you know, the plan calls to preserve view corridors for the new developments, and also to minimize development impacts on existing residential uses. So kind of with that in mind, you know, what about us? You know, can you somehow articulate the buildings in a way, you know, maybe mix some of the red with the purple so that, you know, there's some articulation, so that we do still have some of our beautiful views of the mountains, and that the people in Solo will have views of Beach Hill and the old Victorians and so forth? So I really encourage you to think about that and protect us in that way. And I like the gondola idea, or the, the PRT. I think Ed Porter first presented that years ago, so thank you.
Thank you so much. Another person online, Ms. Bush? We'll take that person. Good evening, person online, welcome.
Good evening. This is Ross Sonnenfeld. Overall, just wanted to commend the planning staff for a really thoughtful presentation. Especially appreciated the, the thought around the dedicated bike lanes and protected bike lanes, and the, the, the design standards overall, I think, are relatively good for our community. I don't think they're a sea change compared to what exists now, but, but they're a modest movement in the right direction. One thing that I'm somewhat concerned about is, the circulation plan does call for a lot of essentially re-widening with, through land dedications in order to have those, the combination of protected bike lanes and parking and two, two lanes of traffic in each direction. I think we can do everything that we want, or most things that we want, without needing to widen the roads, and without needing to dedicate private land to do that. And I question, you know, each parking space can be somewhere between 300 and 350 square feet. That's the same amount of space as a, a small studio apartment. Pacific Avenue, south of Laurel, there's about 20 parking spaces on each side of the street. That's not a whole lot of parking, but, you know, it's, if, if you're keeping that parking in place in order to redesign your neighborhood and, and you're not, we're eliminating some of that parking in order to create more pedestrian-friendly, more pedestrian, or more bike-friendly neighborhoods, then potentially you're, you're leaving housing units on the table. You know, at 10 stories, 20, 20 parking spaces, that's 20 units? That's 200 units potentially of, of housing that just evaporate if we have to widen the streets. So, so my question is whether or not the, the densities, the housing densities that we're, we're thinking about when we're in this south of Laurel plan include the land that would be dedicated to widening the highways, or if that's, hasn't been factored in. I just encourage the city to rethink having all of that together. Definitely want to see protected bike lanes, but I don't think we necessarily need, you know, dedicated traffic lanes in both directions, or, or parking on both sides of the street. I'd definitely remove parking on at least one side of the street in order to avoid having to widen the high, widen the roads. Anyway, overall, good job. Thanks very much.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. Welcome.
What are you in? My name is Jack Lee. Hi, Mayor, council, council member and the planning commission. So I'm actually Jim's next-door neighbor. So I see the same view, same traffic gridlock every weekend. And, and the thing, so one point about the lower extension, that you guys wanted to move more backward toward the beach, that's actually a really bad idea, because that, that row actually helps it congest some of the traffic to Beach Hills. So I think that if we were going to do anything about that extension, we should push a little farther away from the beach so we have better access. And another point is that that area is so gridlocked with traffic, right? How about if we push the traffic further back? So for example, if we could get that, that picture, the vision that the other gentleman showed that we're not going to get, the big plaza with all the beautiful buildings, right? If we make that completely car-free, and then we build a parking lot right at where the soccer field is right now, or, you know, some kind of traffic management, so all of the beach traffic comes in, they park at that area. We can have gondolas, we can have trolleys, and we can bus people around, so that way we completely reduce the traffic, but still allow public to ask the beach, access the beach. And then at the same time, if we look at another different angle, that A, B, C, D, those blocks, if we dedicate it to more business area, if we move all the business, the bookstore, everything from downtown to that area, and then dedicate that into a big area where we have grocery store, we can buy groceries, like, so, so it's not just when the summer is busy, it's vibrant, but when it's off-season, it, people still have a place to go, have a gym, have, you know, other stuff there. And then while vacating some of the business in downtown, we have more capacity there to put more buildings. So, so we're not necessarily crowding that, that front area where we have a beautiful town, beautiful view of, of Beach Hills, and then if you build a building way too high, we're not going to get that beautiful sun shine that they're showing in the picture. Anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Another person online? No one online? Good evening, welcome.
Thank you so much.
Would you be kind enough to, you have a very soft voice. Thank you.
Yeah. My name is Lucy Yin. Thank you so much, Mayor Neely, and the, the council members, and thank you so much for the planning committee, for the wonderful presentation. I'm here, I want to say two things. So personally, I heard lots of comments online about completely get rid of cars, you know, so build less parking, and I just want to talk about my personal experience. My younger son was born in Santa Cruz. For me to be able to support them to enjoy this beautiful city of Santa Cruz, I have to commute 100 miles a day so that our family can live here. I came home every day about 7:30 to 8:00. Think about, at that time, I'm eager to get to my child, and I cannot access my home. I cannot find parking. So what I cannot feel, for this 1,000, almost 2,000 new units, I would, I cannot help but sympathize the working mothers and fathers, how, how their life would be. If Santa Cruz is not only a tourist town, it's, it's our home. It's, it's those people sitting behind you. This is our home, and I try so hard to make a living here. So please, so whatever the planet maximum the unit may not be the best way to benefit everyone. So the downtown area is already so congested. And I want to say, so second thing, when I saw the 85-foot building around Beach Hill area, I cannot help but think, can I, can I, like, how I could help? And now thinking, and my kids growing up are thinking, like, this plan only benefits a few, have the, have the means to be able to live in those 85-foot building? And how they could think about it, growing up here, and blocking the sun, sunlight to their bedroom? And the whole city center, they are so insu, insu, they actually
Thank you for your testimony. Thank you very much.
Yes, talking to us. Thank you so much.
Appreciate your presence here. Thank you. Good evening, sir. Welcome.
Mayor, council members, commissioners. I am Keith Christmas. I own 212 Cedar Street, right next to Foster Freeze, and I, I'm a house that got lumped into this whole arrangement. And I think my biggest concern, like everyone here that I've heard so far, living in the reality of it, is parking and lack of infrastructure. I also heard that this new zoning would limit the qualifications for who gets a parking pass within those new zones. So I don't even know if I, that's something I need to look into. I don't know if I would qualify for a parking pass because I'm now rezoned into this development area. So, yeah, that, that's, basically, it seems like a lot of good work's gone into this. It would be awesome to build up this area, but it seems like the current infrastructure that we have for parking and transportation doesn't exist with the amount of people we're expecting to come in there. And it seems also like the FAR, current zoning, allowable FAR numbers that people have brought up, would allow you to hit your 1,600 units, given the 100%. So it doesn't seem like it's necessary for this rezoning. Those are my main comments. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. We have a person online. We'll take that person, and we'll be right with you. Good evening, person online, welcome. Three, two, one. Good evening.
Hello, everyone. I wasn't planning on talking. I've never spoken at one of these functions, or been in this room, so bear with me. I'm, I'll speak on a couple of experiences of mine. I'm a resident here, and I do work, I'm a co-owner of a business in the, one of the blocks. I work at the Bike Church. We're part of the Hub for Sustainable Living. That site houses various nonprofits that provide very important services, like the Tenant Sanctuary, the Bike Church, and various other businesses. And we're just, or I'll speak on my, my experience, receiving, reviewing information like this is scary for us. It's hard to imagine us fitting into this new vision of the downtown, and it, for me, I think reinforces a sense of gentrification occurring, and it's hard to know where to look to relocate. And I imagine other businesses like ours, like, we're not, we're not, we don't own the building. So where, where will we go? I don't know, and I would appreciate, I'm looking forward to the business meet, business owners' meeting next week, and I'm curious how we will respond over the years. As we know, you know, it's our business, the landowners' decision, so, and that's just our experience, my experience. And then personally, I, I've lived in Santa Cruz for seven years. I'm a small business owner. I run a small engineering consulting company. It's just me trying to do good and support myself. I don't have any dependents. I'm a renter. I'd love to call Santa Cruz my home for as long as possible. And reading, yeah, reading a plan like this, I see the, the tall housing, and I still don't think, I, I don't see it, I don't see me in it. It still seems so inaccessible and unaffordable, and going through Pacific now, I see the, you know, the new buildings, and I, I don't want to, like, want to, like, I think housing nee- is needed, but I, like, I struggle seeing myself in it just based on affordability. Like I just looked up the new, um, a new downtown development, a single bedroom is three thousand dollars starting a month. And I don't know, I guess it's just pretty intimidating and I, I don't want to leave Santa Cruz. I love it here and it's just hard to keep that momentum in me going. And things like this kind of chip away at my, um, perseverance in that. So don't really have any specific feedback, just wanted to share my experience in this since I was here. Um, oh, and I just have one more comment. Doesn't the, the, what is it? Cities like housing allocation don't really need thirty-seven thou- thirty-seven hundred units? So this is like a ton of housing compared to what the whole city is expected. So just a thought. Thanks.
Thank, well, thank you for being here tonight. Hope you come back again. Good evening. Good evening, sir. This is not your first appearance.
Um, by the way, uh, I was wondering if maybe you could give me a few extra seconds or time for folks that are really impacted by this development, uh, myself, Joe already spoke, but, uh, I own the property at Spruce and, um, Pacific, uh, eighteen unit apartment building, or as Owen Lawler calls it, Maine on Maine. Um, but I got a couple of questions. Actually, Bonnie, if you could pick up the, put up that, one question is, is the city prepared to do eminent domain in order to acquire the properties for this, uh, development? I took this picture, I took this picture in Amsterdam, by the way. Kind of role reversal. If you can see it circled, that is somebody that held out and would not give into the hotel development. I call that Joe, that, in fact, that's, that could be Joe Quigg right there, his building. And I'm curious, you know, of course, I'm not going to get an answer here at this meeting, but what, what, what are we going to be doing? What's the plans prevent something like that from happening? It could be me, for instance, um, eminent domain. Um, but here, let's be more serious. Has there been any studies done, market studies done? Who is going to rent these brand new units, which are hundreds are going up? Anton is thirty-one hundred dollars for a studio. You've got two hundred units going up on front and sixteen hundred units in this area? Let's face it, you know, the elephant's in the room. It's going to be called, it's tech, um, Silicon Valley workers that are going to be living in these places. That's good and, you know, that's act- that's actually not a bad thing. A, they bring a lot of disposable income, which will, can be spent on the retail. I don't think we need affordable retail if we have tech workers in these, in these units because they'll spend five dollars on avocado toast and foo-foo coffee and, you know, six dollar grilled cheese, which will, and let's face it, they kill two birds with one stone. This, this could be the, the key to solving the city's financial problems and future problems. Okay, so, but those workers, see, this stuff, this density works in San Francisco and New York City and so forth. Why? Because the jobs are blocks or a subway right away. The jobs for this are over the hill. Those folks are going to have cars. So it's a fever dream to assume that, oh, people are going to get out of their cars and be on their little electric bikes and so forth. It's not going to happen. So one thing I would suggest is we need to accommodate parking for the Google buses and the other buses that are in Scotts Valley and so forth. I think you should include a nice bus area for those sleek wifi-enabled buses that are going to be carrying all these tech workers who are going to be the residents at this, at these places. And UCSI, the salaries at UCSI are pitifully low. They can't even afford, you know, probably half of the, uh, employees can't even afford these kinds of, of, of places. Anyway, so the other one is, I'm disappointed to see that there's no more discussion of a hotel, a really grand, nice hotel at the point, at the, where the car lot is. That would be, um, you know, a real signature project for the city. It would really lessen car needs because the tourists may not have cars, you know? So I'd like to see a hotel down there at the point called The Point, for that matter. Uh, tech bus parking, hotel. What else? What's a warrior's preference in terms of, um, segment D or segment E? I'm kind of, I'd be curious to know what their, what their preference is. Um, tech bus, where, but again, the thing is, who has there been demanded, like NADA on Pacific, okay? It's been around for several years. Anybody know what the occupancy rate is? What's the demographic? Because that's going to be the same demographic for this kind of property. Um, oh, I'm a forty-four seconds over. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Another person online? We'll take the person online and we'll be right with you. Good evening, person online, welcome. Person online, good evening.
Good evening, uh, planning commission, city council members.
Good evening.
Uh, my, my name is Alberto Lucero with the Carpenters Local Union Local, uh, Local Five Oh Five. And it's great to see these, uh, these new plans for the city of, uh, Santa Cruz. Great to see new development. But it's also be greater to see if we are in the future, or now, we have actually some, some various standards on the, on the, who's going to build a project for the construction workers that will include, uh, healthcare, apprenticeship and local hire. Um, many times, uh, workers like myself had to travel away from the city and then commute long hours. And this specific plan will actually give, give an opportunity to this, uh, the, the local community to work in the, in their community and get involved. Also will give the, the opportunity to have healthcare for the families so that they don't become a part of the system. And apprenticeship, new people, people coming, you know, people that come out of high school, women, minorities, giving the opportunity to go into an apprenticeship and build a career and actually live the, make, you know, make the American dream come true via property living in, in St. Santa Cruz. This definitely will make a difference in the city and actually will make a difference for the, uh, construction workers in the future of Santa Cruz. Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you very much. Good evening, sir. Welcome.
Um, this is my first one of these things I've been to, so thanks for being patient and thanks for all the information that's given, given out now.
Thank you for being patient. Thank you.
Um, a quick comment on some of the stuff that was presented. There was a lot of talk about that A, B, C, D block, but the red line and things that are proposed is much, much larger and there wasn't a lot of information given about that. And that's honestly a lot of the area that I'm personally concerned about. Um, so it would be great to shed some light on that. Um, and I'm glad, you know, a few other people have mentioned it today, but like, let's be honest about the type of people that will probably be renting these places out and living in them. Um, you know, think about who our community is going to be made up of. Like three thousand dollars a month for a studio. There's not a lot of jobs in Santa Cruz that can afford that kind of money. Um, that is going to be a lot of over the hill people. A lot of those people don't want to take a bus. They run on their own schedule. Um, I don't think we're setting ourselves up in a good position to have people who are really wanting to stay in the community long-term and invest in it and like actually care about it. Um, I don't work here. I don't own a house. I've been here for ten years. Um, I came to work in the bike industry. I'm all about the bicycles and the riding and like, that's my life. I love it. I drive an hour over the hill back and forth every single day to get to work. Like, if anybody could work here and just ride a bike to work, I would do it. Um, you know, engineering bikes is what I do. And there's more bicycle companies and bikes industry jobs in Santa Cruz than anywhere else in the United States. And I'm still like ten years of working at a bike company over the hill, just like waiting for an opportunity to open up. Still not here. Um, so I just would encourage everyone to think about who would actually rent these out and is this the direction that we want our community to go or not?
Thank you for being here. Thank you for your testimony. Ms. Bush, anyone else online? Last call, if anybody would like to provide input or testimony. Seeing here none matters back before the two bodies. Uh, I wonder if what we might do is Ms. Bush, if you could bring this document up. Um, I'm wondering, uh, I'm going to ask Mr. Van Waan and Mr. Butler this question. Am I right in thinking that as you have gotten individual feedback around here from both commissioners and council members, you've been noting those and that is providing you with a form of direction on this? Is that correct? Okay. Uh, the reason I am asking you to look at this, and I think everybody should have a copy of this, there is one change. Mr. Butler, will you, uh, I want you, I, I worked with a number of people on this, but I want to draw your attention to the words in red because that is different than what you see on the piece of paper and I am in agreement with Mr. Butler on, on, on that change. But let me tell you what, how, at least one way to look at this. I think a way that the planning staff is looking at this is to say, I think if what we want to do is stay within the twelve-story cap, sixteen hundred units, twenty percent of it being affordable after density bonuses. So that, that's our policy. What's our best chance to get there? I think planning has got a way to do that and I think it is providing incentives to keep it twelve stories or less. That is a way to do it and I want them to examine that. I think that's absolutely the right thing to do. I think I'd like them to examine another possibility too. And that is saying, you have to earn your way to twelve stories as opposed to try to stay under twelve. That is a way to do it. I understand. This is designed to see if we can turn that a bit on his head and ask that to be evaluated. Now, I went through this with, as Mr. Murphy indicated earlier, uh, with him, I went over this with Mr. Butler, I've gone over this with, with quite a few folks, to try to see if there's a way to create the incentives to earn your way to twelve stories. And it is a little different than how I had originally thought about it a few days ago. And this is a result of discussions with a lot of folks. But let me step you through it. The, leave the existing general plan densities in place for blocks B, D and H and they'll be dis- they'll be studied at the three point five FAR. That is a, is, is an effort to start with this idea that you have to earn your way to twelve stories. The affordable housing overlay, I think that's, I think we see that in a quite similar way, doing that. The, uh, item three provides incentives in the affordable housing overlay to allow increases in the FAR to a point that sufficiently increases the use of the city's density bonus law, thus incre- you can read it yourselves. The idea here is that we would also be saying, earn your way to these twelve stories as a way to try to keep them capped at, at twelve. And, uh, uh, I think this, if it is analyzed in parallel with what is being suggested here, we may be able to have some choices as we go forward. If I understand what we're doing here this evening, it is to provide the kind of direction so that as we enter the SEQA process, we are clear on what we are subjecting to the SEQA process. And so, uh, that is, the spirit behind this is to, uh, try to have another way of trying to respect what is our current public policy of twelve stories, sixteen hundred units, twenty percent of all units are affordable. Mr. Butler has repeatedly said since January of twenty twenty-three that getting, that achieving those goals requires threading multiple needles, none of which are stationary. And other needles are being added as time moves on. It's a very, very difficult task and I, I, I recognize that. But none of us are afraid of hard work and the planning department isn't afraid of hard work. So I think that by having another possible way, uh, will give us, uh, some options that are, that would be helpful. I'd be interested in any of your comments, but as you know, what we're trying to do here this evening is see if we can do things by consensus. And what I would ask after you've made any comments is that by consensus, we refer this to the department, uh, as indicated on this, on this document. So let me entertain, uh, comments or questions on this if people may have them. Not everybody at once, though. Okay, there we go. Yes. Mr. Butler, come on up here. I'm going to need your help.
Actually, are you asking for comments on this or just general comments?
Oh, I think general comments.
Okay, good.
But if you have comments on this, that's.
No, I just wanted to clarify. I have general comments. I didn't know if now you want them.
Please do.
Um, let's see, I guess I, I would ask, um, um, I think it would be helpful to provide direction that going forward with this plan, that there, it was very clear that there's a lot of missing information, um, in terms of context of housing around, um, the area. Um, we have, I, I, it just seems like everything always refers to Anton Pacific, the one new building at the corner and their rental rates. And so really pulling in and including all the developments in the area, four of them are low income, affordable, a hundred percent affordable, five to five seater, fully leased. I, you know, the people living there, I met a single mom and her kid. I met a Spanish-speaking woman who, you know, she's trying to get her family all together. And I mean, there's various diverse groups of people living in these new developments and, and not all of them are the market rate building at the corner of Laurel and Pacific. The building right next to that is one of those projects and the metro upcoming building will be another one. And so I just think having, um, that context will be helpful for everyone in terms of providing meaningful input. Because if we just look at that plan and that housing and those commercial spaces without knowing everything else that's already happening around, it, it's just, I think we can achieve a lot more. And I know it feels like we have that information out there in so many ways, but, um, you know, I just think it's clear to just reiterate, um, the occupancy, the rental rates, the, the, the housing that is around and, um, the mix of, um, income housing and how important that is to have a diverse and thriving, um, city center. And that is essentially a city center area. Um, so that was just kind of the direction I think is going to be so crucial moving forward. Um, and that was my first thought, so I didn't want to lose that. I'm going to pass it because there's so many of us and I'm sure some of my other thoughts are, um, will be asked, but if they aren't, I'll come back around.
Uh, I'm going to work this way. Councilmember Colin Tore Johnson.
Okay, thank you. Um.
We're good.
Okay.
Councilmember.
Um, okay, uh, just a, a couple of thoughts and comments. Uh, myself and, and Councilmember Newsom and the mayor have served on this ad hoc committee and have been witness to the tremendous amount of work and the lift it's taken for, for staff to bring this forward. So I just want to acknowledge and thank the team, um, for getting us to this place. Um, I think what the mayor has proposed here does get to a lot of what we are trying to accomplish with this vision. I, I hear the concerns of community members who've spoken up about the anxiety and trepidations around this change. It's, it's big and it's an opportunity. Um, it's an opportunity for us to create a new neighborhood. And that's how I keep thinking about it. It's a neighborhood and we can do this right. I think this helps get us there. How I see this is it's helping us maintain somewhat of the local control that we don't have. That's, that's how I see, um, this incentive portion of what the mayor has put forward. So, um, yeah, I think that, that in order for us to get there, to create this vibrant new neighborhood, we do need to continue to hear each other and listen to each other. Uh, we need to be open-minded. We need to be open to stretching ourselves and to innovate together. Uh, I'm, I'm very excited. I think there's a lot of work. There are hurdles that we heard about tonight that we haven't thought through thoroughly yet that we'll need to. Uh, and I do have further direction. Uh, I don't know if we want that now or after everyone has shared.
I think what might be helpful is if you do that now and then folks will be able to think about it as we move around.
Right. So, great. So, great, so the further direction I have, and I did email it to Bonnie, and I could forward it to you as well, or here she is, but I'll say it, and Bonnie, I emailed you this direction. So, "to further study and include options for financing public infrastructure and public parking improvements in the plan, including but not limited to additional impact fees and infrastructure financing districts." And Ms. Bush can hopefully bring that up.
Okay, thank you.
But I think this gets us to where we want to go.
Fair enough. We will, as we've heard from people, then I'm going to, at the end of all this, ask if we can refer all of this by consensus. That's what we'll do. So be thinking if you have a concern about, as people are saying, I want to provide this additional direction and so on, keep in mind that you're going to be willing to agree with that. Vice Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I appreciate the work that went into this, and I understand and support the spirit of what you put forward here. I agree with what you said about looking at the whole new development holistically. I think if we're just looking at only the number of affordable units as a percentage or a number, that's great, but if it's not a local preference, if it's just people coming from wherever, which is what I've seen in some of the places, then that's not solving any of our problems. So I also would like to just note that although $3,000 for a studio seems like sticker shock, a brand-new teacher could afford that, a firefighter could afford that, other people that are, I would consider us, you know, blue-collar, working people that didn't want to live with roommates, someone could afford that. And as I was looking on Craigslist, there was also, if you don't want to pay $3,000 for a new studio, you can still find duplexes that are two bedrooms around town for $3,000 or other options. So there's, and maybe they're not in the same, they're older, right? And so I think if people are going to move into these units, and maybe there's no parking, people that have two cars are going to choose to live there. They're going to choose to live in a different neighborhood. And so while I agree with our team that we do need parking down there to attract people from throughout the region, I don't know what that would look like, and I don't know how we can require it, but I think it is something to consider if we want to make it an attractive option for people to come down and use the space. I really loved that Spruce Street Plaza area and kind of the trees and things that I saw there. I would love to see the trees kind of continuing over the river so we could have spaces. I know the whole levee has really lost a lot of vegetation over the years, and so I think that's contributed to the inability for some of the salmonoids to spawn. And so as we're looking at, you know, it's bigger, but I just want to keep that in mind that we're making spaces for the fish and create, so we're creating pathways down to the rivers, maybe there's opportunities for people to fish or paddle or swim in the future. My other little thoughts about this in terms of neighborhoods for people of all ages, like Councilmember Watkins has said, we both love the ideas of little parks or parklets in places where people could be out with their kids, or anybody of any age can use the space. And I think that overall, it's a really great project and a design. Before you guys were on the council, I was on this group years ago, and fundamentally, I feel like it hasn't changed from its original vision, and it started way before I was on council, but I just really was excited about it. The first time I heard about it was from Ms. Lipsicum when I was running for council, and I just think it's wonderful, and I really would love to see us taking back some of the control that the state has taken away and bringing this future development and redevelopment to this area that I think would be an improvement from what it is right now. So that's it. I don't know if I can say thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Okay, Councilmember.
Yeah, thank you, and thanks for all the comments and suggestions that have been brought forward. I think we do want to get creative about what kind of local control we can have in this kind of environment at the state level. I'm supportive of, you know, looking into these options as possible avenues to do that. I definitely support an idea of how we're going to be realistic about parking. I certainly am supportive of wanting to have alternative transportation options, and we have to be realistic about parking. And I also want to acknowledge what our communities said they wanted for this area, which is adding capacity for multifamily housing, opportunities for public amenities, and to connect our downtown river and beach, and certainly a permanent arena. And to do that, you have to holistically think about what that looks like, and that for, I don't know how, honestly, I don't know how we do multifamily housing under the environment we're in, in terms of how developers are trying to maximize affordability with smaller units, but that's contradictory for what our community is asking us to do. So if there's ways we can get creative about that, I think we need to, and we have to also understand that families require cars usually, I mean, they don't need two necessarily, but generally one, and that's just realistic. So if we're trying to build a community that's holistic for everybody, and we're being responsive to what our community is saying they want us to be responsive to, creative solutions like this matter, I will also just add an additional point, because I'm a supporter of NEXIS studies, I think it's important, there is impact to development, and development can help pay for those impacts, and a NEXIS study helps us understand what those are. I think that's a good thing. And I would say that with these higher developments that require, you know, this larger infrastructure, what we've heard from our fire department is an interest in having a training center to be able to accommodate emergency situations, to be prepared for that. So there is impact associated with how we are also thinking about the residual outcomes with what is being proposed by some of these developments, and frankly, I think they should help pay for that. So I'm supportive of the NEXIS study suggestion. I think I made my comments earlier about thinking about the various design. I think it's really exciting, and I know it's nuanced, I know where we first started, we had more control than where we are now. So yes, I think we do want to make sure we can maintain that to the best of our ability and be able to make decisions to enable that. And, you know, the Warriors have been amazing for our community, we want to support and celebrate them. They've been incredible in terms of what they've offered and continue to offer our community as well. So I just want to acknowledge that and thank Chris Murphy for calling in on his daughter's birthday. And I think this is really exciting, and I think we can balance, to some of my colleagues' points, we can balance all of it to the best of our ability. So thanks for the innovative solutions.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you. Just want to say a few bigger picture things and then comment on the proposals we've heard from the mayor and Councilmember Calentari Johnson. We heard a lot about people being worried about what this is going to mean in terms of quality-of-life impacts for people who may have stable housing and are working hard to be able to maintain that, and from renters, not many, but from those who have no say in what happens to their housing, right, or their place of business should the owner, the property owners want to sell. In the time I've lived here for 35 years, I usually don't talk about, like, I've been here for so long, because people do that, like, it's some, you know, it gives you some additional right to have an opinion, right? But I say that because what I've seen over those years is, you know, kind of a slow and steady march towards, you know, increased housing costs. You know, the gentrification of our community, if not the built environment, certainly who gets to live here? And I have seen many of my own friends displaced. I made it 20 years here before I was displaced, and in the time I've been on this council for, you know, in eight years, the median income in this community has almost doubled, and median rents have more than doubled, and in less than a decade. So when we think about, you know, we can say, well, we don't, you know, of course, our intention isn't gentrification, but that's just what's happening, and it's going to continue to happen, and the question is, how much do we want to try to push back on that, or do we want to facilitate that? And so every time we talk about upzoning and how great it's going to be when those property values go up, we're also talking about the cost for developers, that's going up, right? The land, it gets capitalized and then into the rents, and every, so it doesn't really benefit everyone. It may benefit the city and increase real, you know, property taxes, but it's not really benefiting everybody. And it means that more and more people are being pushed out, and I just have to say that because this isn't about, like, oh, change is hard, you know, we hear change is hard, and, you know, tall buildings scare people, but they shouldn't. This is about who gets to live here and what kind of community we want to have, and many of you tonight made that point. Mr. Mosinin has left, but, or I think he's left, he'd be maybe shocked to hear me say, I completely agree that some kind of analysis needs to be done about the potential to fill these spaces, because who can afford those rents? Well, yeah, tech, you know, young people who are kind of starting, no, families are not going to move into a $3,000-a-month studio, right? You know, if a firefighter wants to be single their whole life, they could afford to live alone, or, you know, actually firefighters make a little bit more than that, but teachers, nurses, right? If they want to live alone their whole life, then they can find a place, right? Those are the realities that we are facing here. And so, and I want to also bring up, and it's kind of connected to Mr. Mosinin's point, Councilmember Bruner, you mentioned, you know, well, everybody's talking about Anton, right, and everybody's talking about the clock tower. I think these are opportunities for us to see what actually is coming and to think about the reality of that, and that's why people are focusing on those. And yes, 525-seater filled, that's an affordable housing project. Anton Pacific, 13%. You have to have $10,000 in the bank to move into a studio. Yeah, 13%. So, and we know that some of those other, the other kind of market rate developments that came in before density bonus, before, you know, that some of us were already uncomfortable with, are not all full either. So, you know, but those new, those new units are going to set the market, right? They're going to set the market, and they can hold those units empty and write off losses, and so the incentive to build affordable housing is very, very minimal. And so now, I'll just, that was my kind of soapbox. I'll say, I think that, I also recognize that, you know, change is going to happen, the state has taken away a lot of our authority, but where we can, we should. And so I think that, you know, really, I really like the idea of the Affordable Housing Overlay, and so I appreciate that that's shown up here, and I think there is more work to be done to try to think about how that could, might be utilized. And I really think that most of all, flipping this on its head and causing developers to think about earning that density and height rather than coming to us and saying, well, by right, you have to give it to us, and, you know, and we could ask for more, right? That is, I think it's brilliant. So I really absolutely support that. I support Councilmember Calentari Johnson, your suggestion as well, because I, as I asked in the early stages of the presentation, I am concerned about how the city might finance all this. You know, we delay capital projects for what we already have, and so, and there isn't going to be huge grant funding available, at least not in the near term. So we do have to think about how that's going to get funded, and putting ourselves into a ton of debt with the expectation that all this is going to fill up and pay itself off is not good planning. So I think that moving in this direction and really trying to impress upon our planning staff that this is a priority for this council is a good idea. My preference would be to leave the B, D, and H blocks as per unit rather than FAR, because FAR is really why we have no height limits, right? If it was a number of units, we could maintain a little bit more of a, you know, not control, well, control, yeah, I'll just say that. But I'm willing to consent around this as long as we are not talking about increasing the FAR beyond that, because really 3.5 is seven, as Mr. Schifrin said earlier. So I'll leave it there. I think that, oh, another thing I did want to say, it was a question I meant to ask, in terms of community engagement, the staff report gave us a taste of, or actually, the whole inventory of the work that you've done, but I'd like to hear about engagement of tenants, their business owner tenants, who I guess have been invited to a meeting, that's great to hear, but those are the folks who are going to suffer if they don't get to have some voice in this and hopefully come up with some ways to deal with those relocation issues in a way that actually works. So please engage with everybody in the south of Laurel area and the surrounds, and not just property owners. I recognize they have a lot of power because they own property, but there are a lot of people who are going to be affected. We also heard from neighbors about kind of traffic, et cetera, and I think those are all critical, I'm not going to, you know, expound on that. I'll leave it there, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Newsom.
Thank you, Mayor Keeley. I just want to start by thanking staff for all of their work that they've done on this plan and bringing this forward, and also I want to thank Mayor Keeley for bringing this forward, and I think this is responsive to what we've heard tonight and will help us keep more of our, a little bit more of our local control, as my colleagues have said, and something I support. We've heard, you know, we've heard tonight several times about who will get to live here and who will get to live in this area, and, you know, we're calling for 1,600 units, three, at least 320 of which will be affordable housing units, or 20%, possibly more, depending on the direction we go. And I do want to say that, you know, we do have local preference on the books for local preference, and if you work locally. And I've also had conversations with Plank Director Butler about a new state bill that passed last year, SB 649, that actually broadens the categories that can be provided for a local preference. So one could be, one possibility could be those who inhabit low-income areas that are already affected by displacement having a preference as well. And it's my understanding that the Plank Department is working on researching that bill and finding the various new categories that can be added to those preferences, and I just want to really urge the Plank Department to continue that work and to bring forward, you know, the final product of that work at the earliest possible date for council to consider. I think that'd be really great to add more, more preferences that can, you know, allow for community members to stay here and to live in this area and to help this area thrive. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Thompson.
Oh, where to begin? Actually, I think that the place to begin is to crunch some numbers. This is the first time I've had a chance to kind of see the numbers that have been already bounced around, but it does seem very promising to me that we have some numbers right on your handout tonight, and it would be worthwhile to do some tests on this. One of the things that's an important variable is just the size of dwelling units. And so we have two different measures, and one is the FAR, which kind of tells you what the gross envelope is, and that's usually not very flexible, so that's a good parameter to start out with. And then you can set some goals for how many actual dwelling units, how many kitchens do you want to have, and the math there just comes down to, so what's the range of unit sizes? And... And one of the things that I have strong feelings about is that we still have a desperate undersupply of small units. And it's just a, it's just a, it's just the math. That is to say, we have a lot of single people who share housing because that's the only way they can afford to keep a roof over their head. They, they don't want to have a roommate, they'd rather have a place of their own. So coming up with a neighborhood that's very urban, that is close to a lot of the support elements that we look for in a community, happen to be downtown, it's a pretty good location for small households. And so let's play with some numbers here for a bit and use the 3.5 lid, but then ask ourselves, so how would the math work out with different household sizes? And, and what would that really mean for the character of the neighborhood as well? Single people use services outside the home at a greater level than families do. So that's also a good fit with what we are likely to find in downtown. The, the second or third places that we, we enjoy in our downtowns. So I'm, this is really staff work, but I'm perfectly willing to roll up my sleeves and look at it too. But just do the math, let's just kind of figure out. My sense is that the 12-story thing might not turn out to be as interesting as folks think, because at a floor area ratio of 3.5, we probably don't need to go above the kind of eight-story limit, which is the affordable height for residential construction. So that, that'd be my recommendation. Let's, let's play with the numbers with our staff and see what kind of scenarios that produces. And then ask ourselves, so who do we want to be building this neighborhood for? And I mean, the, the car is going to be a problem no matter what we do. So let's get the housing right first.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner McKelvey?
I think most of the comments I was going to make have been covered already. Thank you for engaging it so thoroughly. I do want to say that for, for people's concerns about gentrification, density, et cetera, density creates gravity in a place, and it makes it so that, you know, those retail and small business incubators, all those things, those are supported by the people, by people being able to access them as, as customers and patrons. And when you put people in a place, in a, in a, an urban environment, your example, that's what supports those, those ideas. And I think it's just to be encouraged at every opportunity. About the, the, I just want to reiterate something I said, I think in another meeting, that it's exactly the case that when a bunch of small households occupy one building, they're, they would love to have another alternative that would then free up that home for families. And the idea, that's, that's just something that happens in every community. And, but when you don't have the alternatives and you don't have the supply, that's impossible. And that's when prices go up too. So I just think that we need to really be mindful of not everyone is in the same housing demand circumstance. There have to be just as many different types of housing as we can possibly provide at, at every level, whether it's affordable or market rate, or whether it's a three-bedroom, two-bath, or a studio. And I, I just think we have to really dig in and try to figure out every opportunity for that. And overall, I just think this plan, thank you so much for the public, for the staff, everyone's desire to make this something really great. And I think it's an opportunity that we have to just seize and try to do something with.
Commissioner, thank you very much. Commissioner Kennedy?
This is just so exciting to be here at the middle of the third act of our downtown. I'm kind of excited about it. So I have three kind of quick hits. I want to encourage staff, and I, me and Matt talked about this, but to keep adding graphics and drawings. I remember for the downtown plan that I worked a lot on, they're not like the most beautiful sketches I've ever seen, but the graphics that are in there tell the story. So I know you're doing that already, but the architects I talked to say, we want those graphics, those let us make buildings that aren't terrible. That gives me the ammo to say, no, I want a porch there, or, or something like that. So keep that up and, and let's enhance that as much as we can. The original Warriors Stadium, there's a great concern about shared parking. I am not dismissing parking concerns, I hear y'all, you know, I drive around all the time as fact, but I wonder if there's data that Claire could resurface on, like, did that affect the downtown parking district? I don't remember, but I'd like to hear that again if it's out there. This is not the same, but it'd be a good comp, you know? Oh, gosh, I have to mention that the upside to the 100% density bonus, like, you get really tall buildings, but you also get a lot of affordable units. So I didn't hear that said enough tonight, that it's a wang, and that's really important weight to me, even if they're 289 square feet, which is what I was working on at work today. Yeah, so I'm just thrilled, I can see this energy with this plan. And this, I think, is because the pendulum is swinging. When we worked on that last plan, we were in desperate straits, you know? We had terrible housing situation here. So things have changed, the pendulum's swinging back, tourism is booming now, we're up 29%, right? Or whatever that number was. Oh, I love this one, the future's all electric, nobody's arguing about that anymore. There's no more gas burning in any of these buildings. Probably, probably broad statement, Supreme Court aside. We can talk about that later. We are gentrified, like, I'll say it, we're way more gentrified than when I was at Santa Cruz High. No doubt about it, let's acknowledge it. And I personally think those affordable units are like the only tool we have to fight that, but that's just my opinion. Silicon Valley is here now, like, everyone still has this, like, old and the dyke mentality. Our planning directors from Santa Clara, welcome, Lee, I love you, I'm so glad you could.
He lived here.
Let's, let's stop pretending we can hold that way back, acknowledge it and roll with it, you know? I'm getting to the end here. So the last two big ones on my bullet points are, now we are building enough housing at all income levels, and now we are even planning for enough housing. So we need to, like, take back our power here. And we're doing it, when council pushed back on that development, I was like, right on, you know? So this is a different stance for this development discussion to happen, you know, we're hitting our goals. So then I wanted to wrap up, to respond to Renee, who I love your blunt comments, why are we even doing this? This is the third of three processes. The first was downtown had fallen down in 1989. Talk about desperate, oh, man, I mean, a high schooler looking at big holes in the ground where the bookshop was. The second one, not just because I was involved, because all sorts of factors, like the most successful, you know, plan ever, and we're seeing the effects out here. This is the next one, so like, why are we even doing this, even if certain developers think they can come in here and say, I don't care about your rules, we're going to build as high as you want? No, this is a community dialogue, this is how we define what we want, be clear with people about that. And they still have the option of saying, meh, 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 but, you know, this is, we need to do this, it's really important. I saw through so many meetings how it worked on the last part, you know, developers behind closed doors saying, ee, that's going to be too expensive, neighbors of all sorts, you know? So anyway, this is all happening, and we just need to keep it going. It's like we have the momentum. Oh, so I have one more quick one, which may be controversial, I want to touch on lighting and dark sky. I got a, I worked really hard on lighting, like, for the Anton Pacific project, and starting tonight for this week, the building will be lit up on the outside at night, so I'd encourage and invite you all to cruise by. You know, these plans and these buildings take so long that that was like before all the objective standards, but just take a look. And it, like, I haven't even seen it yet. So I think that in this plan, we're already really well addressing lighting, but I want this to be dark on the river and super bright and active. And, yeah, I got to admit, that LED screen, I did kind of go, ee. But when I read about projections and 3D holographs, I'm like, that's great, that's what we want in our entertainment district. So continue that work to put the light where it's useful, and we want it, and not in our natural areas. So I'm good with all those consensus comments. Oh, the last one I want to finish with is like my, from my heart, you know, India Joe's, like, I can't imagine someone more Santa Cruz than India Joe's. He catered my wedding, you know, let's go down the list, through the years, moving from one space to the other. And I had such heartburn on that last downtown plan, that we were like, you know, putting India Joe's basically out of business, because we did, you know? I just, that's the, like, the price of change, and if we want this new city, that has to be there. And, you know, he ended up retiring, and just to bring it to a humorous conclusion, I just found in a box, $107 gift certificate for India Joe's for my wedding that I, I'm not going to be able to use, but hey, you know, he did what he wanted, these other businesses were relocating, so it will be okay, and it's worth it for this new thing we're going to get.
Commissioner, thank you. Commissioner Dan?
I'll be brief, because I think we're at the point where almost everything's been said, but just not by me. So I just want to say I strongly agree with Councilmember Watkins with what you said about parking. I think we need to live in reality that we need to deal with that. I live downtown, used to live on Beach Hill, so that's where I've been for the last 30 years. Also, it doesn't make my opinion more valid, but I do think that the impacts are very real. I see them, I empathize with the neighbors, and so I, you know, I just think that needs to be said. Like Commissioner Kennedy said, this is going to bring out real change, so I appreciate your honesty. It's, it's going to gentrify, it will put people out of business, but there'll also be positive, positive things about it. The one thing I did want to address was how the improvements are going to be financed. And I think that this is really, a really important component of this whole plan, and I appreciate Councilmember Calentari Johnson's additional direction in wanting to be flexible at financing. I did have some concerns about the redevelopment, part duh, kind of approach to this, and that those tax increment improvements would go to the district, which I completely understand why that might be necessary, and that might be the way the city needs to go. On the other hand, this new neighborhood is undoubtedly going to cause a lot of impacts, and there's an argument that the rest of the city should benefit from that. There should be some public benefit, the rest of the city. So I just, you know, this is the middle of the process, not the end, so just putting that out there.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let me ask, Mr. Butler, Mr. Van Waal, clear? You, you seek any clarification? Excuse me, I'm sorry.
I've been silent the whole night, so.
Please accept my apology.
It's okay.
Please.
I do want to thank the Planning Department for all this work and subcommittee. One of the things that I've had conversations with Lee about, and we see on the Planning Commission is, and you're seeing, is all these projects that are coming at us. And part of that, and it's been said in different ways, is that we're not creating a plan for ourselves, so it's just happening to us. And so it's really important that we take ownership in, in making plans for ourselves. And it may, we may not all agree on the location or any of these things, but it's an opportunity here that we have to seize, and we need to make decisions for ourselves, otherwise it's just going to happen to us. So I appreciate the effort being made to help us identify a plan. I would say that the graphics and the photos are a little bit dangerous. I mean, what we saw tonight was like nothing over six stories, really, and huge plazas that aren't really what we're going to have, at least at this moment. And so it becomes, particularly right now, under the circumstances that we're experiencing here, is that we're dealing with a trust issue, and we're, and we're having to communicate with the community about that. And so we really do need to work on the level of transparency and communication that we're talking to the community about, about these projects. And so I just, as we move forward in this process, I just want to make sure that what we're showing the community is, is something that's more realistic, or, or worst-case scenario even, because it's, 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 that, that's really what we're potentially up against. So, so I would, I, I want to encourage us to, to develop that a little bit further as we move forward with this. I also wanted to say with, Matthew mentioned doing the math, and I think one of the things that comes up for me, and I know that Lee and the Planning Commission have heard this from me, is that it is important for us to know how many of these individual, you know, small studio units are coming across the table, or whatever we want to call it, for approval, because we do need diversity down there. We need diversity of units to create an active space. And so if, you know, if we're having developers come, you know, submitting different projects, but nobody's taking a look at how many of these single units that we have in totality over the next five years, we could find ourselves in, with a surplus that doesn't serve us as, is, is a feeling that I'm having recently for the units that we're seeing come across. So, so I don't know how we do that, but as we move forward with this, I think that that's an important part of the planning of, to create vibrancy down there. And also, single units create vibrancy, so there's that. But there's also others, so a diversity there, and, and doing the math, I think will do that. I think, specific questions I had, you know, and I, I do, because I waited all night, this is where we're at, but the EIR, I, I am curious, and we don't necessarily have to answer it tonight, but really having the community understand, I know it's based on 1,800 units, but what does it look like with the Warriors Stadium events and then 200 additional events? Like, I'm just not really even clear, and I'm up here with all of you. Like, I don't really understand how the EIR really factors in all the things when we don't actually know all the things yet, you know, in terms of what this area is going to fully be. So that was kind of just a specific, a specific thing that I think the community's going to want more information on. And then the only other thing was the parking thing, and really trying to figure out, like, in the incentivizations, like, is there, can we incentivize parking in developments that can be rented or traded for the events? And I don't know what that looks like, but it's worth having a study session on, on creative problem solving there, so. Okay, that's probably, and also I think that, I'm, I mean, I am fully behind your comments to add to this, and, and exploring these things. I don't know that I'll agree with them once we get the information back, but I'm, you have my consensus, so, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Now, we told that.
Oh, I have one more thing I want to include, sorry, I forgot. But the planning part is, is, it's also really important to factor in what we're going to do about materials and what we want it to look like, not just what we want the street sizes to look like, because I think we're also seeing that come across our table quite a bit, is that the, the choices that are being made right now, we, I, I'm not convinced are going to stand the test of time. And I feel like if this is going to be another leg of downtown, we want to make sure that we can all agree that 100 years from now, that we feel good about what we've, what we've built. And I feel like we've done a good job of that so far in our downtown, and it's right on the edge right now, so.
Councilmember Brunner, you had an additional comment.
Thank you. I just, I don't know if, from all the comments, it's clear with the direction, but I wanted to kind of state it clearly for direction to have, there's a need for data and to accompany this plan each time it moves forward in its phase. And the data, I know we were given last year around housing element, maybe, I don't remember when, but data of the housing sizes needed, there was, you know, there's data about the... when, but data of the housing sizes needed, there was, you know, there's data about the migration cycles of a person's lifetime and the housing migration needs, and our aging population, and the data we've recently received about seniors, and, and so, how many studios are needed? And even a studio could be a couple or one person, how many family-sized housing is needed? And there was some data from many different sources, including the Housing Authority of Santa Cruz County. And so, I think those data needs around housing needs have to accompany this moving forward, if that wasn't clear. And then, data of existing commercial and residential, we heard tonight, concerns of displacement, so displacement of commercial and residential information of, about protections. Each time this plan is presented, someone listening might be in fear, as we heard tonight. And so, how do we make sure we're addressing that and conveying that, hey, community, we, we have you in mind, too? And here's what we know so far, and here are the protections so far, just so someone doesn't feel like they're not part of the plan. And that displacement information would be really helpful. And then, the data on the existing new developments, Anton Nonda, 555 Pacific, you know, everything that's around that's new, the New Library Affordable Housing Project, and the leasing data, too, the occupancy, the leasing data, all of that, I know it's a lot, but I think it's helpful context so that we're not looking at this as one piece, it's part of a fabric. And it's important information to help inform, so we can make informed decisions, and the community can make informed input and informed decisions. So, I hope that direction is clear moving forward with, with this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Butler, Mr. Van Waal, do you need any clarification from a Commissioner or a Council member as to what they want by way of providing you with input and what they're hoping to see back? Do you need clarification? All right, fair enough. Thank you, Planning Staff, thank you Clerk Staff for being here this evening, Economic Development Planning Staff, thank you all very, very much, our consultants, thank you very much. This is the beginning of a lot of input on this document. You can go to the city's website at the Planning Department and see where you can continue to provide input until July the 10th, is that correct? Till close of business on July the 10th. You can send emails, you can send texts, you can send, well, I don't know that you can send text. You can send emails, you can send snail mail, you can do lots of things. Please do participate, there will be many other opportunities for participation in this very compound complex project. With that, the Vice Mayor, with deep reluctance and choking back tears, moves to adjourn, and Councilmember, who would, who would be, Councilmember, equal reluctance, Councilmember locked in seconds, non-debatable, those in favor signify by saying aye. Both. Motion carries in so order, thank you all for being here.
Nice.
Thank you for all your work.